Okay, well, welcome to the January 13th, 2020, meeting of the Grand County Planning Commission. Has everybody had an opportunity to meet Brian Wallston, our new commissioner?
Welcome, Brian.
Welcome.
Brian, you probably know Kenny and me, but I don't know if you have met Mila.
Hi.
Mila is our Community Economic Development Specialist.
So, we just concluded a field trip, and unfortunately, the developer wasn't there. So, we didn't get to see much of his project, but we got to see some of the potential impacts that we've heard about. Our bylaws state that a couple of things that I think we need to consider changing. One is the bylaws state that meeting materials will be sent to Planning Commission members by 5:00 PM on the Friday before the Planning Commission meeting. So, I would suggest that maybe we look at modifying our, or amending our bylaws to an earlier date for those of us who, for whatever reason, don't want to spend our weekends looking at packets or reading through the packet. If we could change that date to Wednesday, maybe, or something, but that's just a future consideration for the county, the Planning Commission to think about. The second thing is the agenda shows the election of officers, first up, as an action item before we approve the minutes. And our bylaws state that the election of officers will occur at the end of the first meeting of the year. So, what I would like is, if possible, if we want to go ahead and have the election first off, we can do that, but I think we ought to make a motion to say that you accept the agenda as written. Okay, we have a motion to accept the agenda as written by Kevin Walker.
Second.
Seconded by Bob O'Brien. Okay, let's get to the meat of the action then. We have a chair and vice chair to elect tonight. Do we have any nominations? Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, the motion. Okay, yes, sorry. I'm in a hurry to get over this job. Okay, we have a motion to accept the agenda as written by Kevin Walker, seconded by Bob O'Brien. All in favor? It's unanimous? Okay, let's get on to the election of new officers.
I would like to make a nomination for chair. Though she's not here, I would like to nominate Abby Scott to serve as chair of the Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a nomination of Abby Scott as chair of the Planning Commission. Any more nominations? Well, then, I say we vote, and since we only have one, oh.
We don't have to vote, do we?
Yes. We still have to vote, yeah. So, let's.
Keep it nice and clean.
To make a vote, since we only have one nomination, I say we vote by voice call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Any no opposition? Okay, now, we need a vice chair. Any nominations for vice chair? We have a nomination of Emily Campbell as vice chair, seconded by Bob O'Brien. We'll do the same thing. All in favor? Opposed?
Did you vote?
Not me, sure.
Who seconded?
Go girlfriend.
Bob O'Brien. If Emily votes, it'll be unanimous. If she doesn't vote, we still have.
I'll vote for myself.
Five to zero.
There you go, okay. Take it, Emily.
All right, here we go. So, next up on the agenda is to approve the October 8th, 2019 meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yep.
Any concerns about the minutes as written?
I didn't have any.
I believe that we accept these minutes.
Do we have a second?
Oh, yes.
The October 8th.
Where the first one, I thought we were on.
I think we just have the one. I think we just have, in my packet.
October 8th.
October 8th.
Yeah. So, Bob moves to accept the October 8 minutes. Do we have a second?
I seconded.
Any comment? Okay, all in favor of voting to approve the October 8th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting minutes? All right, five four. Fantastic. Do you have any citizens who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda today?
Did you want to speak on agenda item?
Yes, basically, it's on the Novo Court.
Okay, so, we'll wait for that, then, during the public.
We're going to have a hearing on that at 5:00.
At 5:00?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Great. So, before we kick off, so, we've got a 5:00 PM hearing, do we want to save the ex parte communications until we get to the hearing? Do you think it matters? Does anybody have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications related to today's agenda to share? Bob?
Maybe what other people have or not. So, I did meet with citizens at Sherri Griffiths' property at about 2:15 today, and then some citizens up at the site of the project that we're going to talk about at Rancho Nuevo. And I tried to tell them I was interested in the geographic area and visualizing it, and I don't think I heard anything that's not already in the record in the letters. So, that's what I have to say.
So, dealing with Nuevo Court, I have Rancho Nuevo. I have gotten several pieces of correspondence from various people. Luckily, they copied me on correspondence that they sent to Kenny, and everything has been provided to you that I've received. I've also received some phone calls from people that wanted to talk to me about it, and I told them that it was not appropriate, and they were quite respectful of that.
And I also, with Bob and Garrish this afternoon, met other Planning Commissioners and members of the public to view the property from Sherri Griffiths' property from below and from an adjoining property, and also did not hear anything that was not otherwise shared already in our packet materials and made no comments that would be inappropriate or suggest any kind of personal bias or position already.
I was there also. I'm new here. I was not there, but I went on a, I did, Sherri Griffiths showed me around her property a few weeks ago, and there was some discussion, but I think everything she said is, was also in her comment letters.
All right, well, we have three discussion items before we get to our hearing at 5:00. So, Garrish started by mentioning the bylaws, which prompted the first vote about our agenda. But you had some other concerns. Do you want to just speak to those?
No, I'm not even sure why bylaws was included on the agenda. I think it was to make sure that Brian had an opportunity to read those before our meeting, but I didn't have anything other than what I've already mentioned.
And I have, I have some things to mention, but I also think it's in the bylaws that we review them this time each year. So, I think that's certainly another reason there in front of us. So, I have questions. I'll start Meeting and Organizations, Article 5, Open Meetings. And this may have to do with the definition of a field trip, because I want to be careful. All regular meetings, special meetings, workshops, and field trips of the commission are open to the public and will be announced in accordance with the requirements of the Open and Public Meeting Act, and I don't know if what we did today was a field trip or not. We kind of informally talked about it as such, so I want to know if this means that we really should have made a public announcement of it.
Should be on the agenda, although probably should have, yeah, I know, but it probably shouldn't have had the address. I thought we discussed the names too early tonight. Yeah, I, I, it's, that was potentially a mistake.
Kenny, can you, just so that, since I know that this is something some people are tuning into today, just speak into the mic.
Sure, yes.
So, yeah, we can look into that further, I mean, you know, in terms of, you know, in hindsight, you know, we probably should have put the address, but it's certainly noticed on the agenda and.
It was just a question about how that, how that gets noticed.
Yeah, I think in the future that we will probably provide more details. We don't do these very often, so we don't have a long track record of, you know, what we did or didn't do in prior instances, but in the future, I think it would be good to at least have a summary of what is intended by the field trip and the property that, the location that it would occur.
And I'd also suggest that if we do have a field trip to go look at a development proposal, that the proponent of that development proposal attend the field trip so that they could show us around.
Or at least be invited.
No, I'm saying, we didn't even go on the property because the developer wasn't there. So, just throwing that out, that I think that would be, it would have made our field trip more meaningful if we had had the developer there to kind of walk us through his proposal.
I have, then, one other question. I may be reading it wrong, because it's hard for me to believe we let this slip last time. So, it is V15 and V16 in the bylaws, and V15 basically says you need four people present. Then it says, however, absent commissioners may participate fully by phone or other real-time means to engage in debate, asking questions, making motions, voting on motions, and all other functions of the commissioner. Then in V16, and I may be reading it incorrect, it says commissioner participation in real-time communications, and it says, no commission member shall vote on any matter unless such committee member is physically present at the meeting when the vote is taken. Is that contradictory, or am I reading it wrong?
Read the first one again, Bob.
The first one says you need the four people present. That makes a quorum. That's perfectly fine. However, commissioners may participate fully, and then it says, it means, anyway, they can engage in debate, asking questions, making motions, voting on motions, and all other functions of the commission. And the second one says that no commissioner, no commission member shall vote on any matter unless they are a member, unless such member is physically present at the meeting.
I take responsibility for that contradictory language. I was trying to get our bylaws, when the last time they were revised, I was trying to get our bylaws to be consistent with the county council's bylaws, and I think I missed that. I think our intent was that people could vote, if we had a, we had a quorum present, people could vote, and we did discuss this, people could vote if they called in on the phone. So, that is my mistake, and it's inconsistent because I didn't do it my own job. So, should we just amend the bylaws now?
The solution, the solution would be to get rid of V16, I think.
So, do you want to make a motion to amend our bylaws?
Wait, wait, hold on. So, I mean, you do want something in there stating that remote participation is permitted?
Yes.
You have some leeway in terms of whether remote participation includes the right to vote or make motions or all of the other actions.
But in 5 dot 15, just above that, it's already covered, so I think everything in 16 is either something we don't want or it's redundant.
Right, okay, okay.
And I think that would make us consistent with the county council. I think there are people who aren't there can vote. They still don't need a quorum to take an action.
Right.
Now that we have the ability to have people's faces on the screen as well, that makes me even more apt to support remote joining. I have some changes I want to propose. Do we want to just sort of make motion by motion as they come up and then accept as one motion? What do you think?
I think it'd be better to, to, let's set it as an agenda item, that we want to revise our bylaws and do it all together so people can review the bylaws as they are, make pen and ink changes on their copy, and then we'll come at a future meeting and do the revision. Why not just do it now?
Especially for one, things that are in there by mistake, you know, we already agreed that people can vote, so I don't see any advantage to delaying on that.
It's only shown on the agenda as a discussion item. I mean, it's not, it's, you know, I don't think statutorily that it would be in violation of the open meeting laws because it's not, you know, a land use decision, but, you know, I think what you could do is, for today, maybe take some straw poll votes, and then we bring back to you a red line, official version, and just get through it really quickly.
I think having Abby here when we vote on it makes sense as well, since it's the new chair.
So, is someone going to keep track then of our straw poll?
We'll do that now.
Okay, so, one of them is to strike 5 dot 16?
So, who is, I mean, just, I know it's a straw poll vote, but who is?
Second.
So, Kevin is making the motion, and Bob is seconding.
Straw poll.
I thought it was a second.
Yeah, I'm going to have a straw poll on.
Okay, if we're going to do that, I'd like to make a change to.
Well, hold on, hold on, let's just straw poll the V16, and then we'll come to the next one. So, straw poll, all in favor of striking 16, none opposed. Okay, Garrish.
Okay, under 5 point 6, meeting materials, I'd like to change the 5:00 PM Friday to 5:00 PM Wednesday.
I have a whole, yeah, the, are we, should we do discussion now? Oh, so, but is it the case that citizens can bring in letters till Wednesday? So, I think that would be, you'd have to then move that earlier.
Garrish, do you think we'd better just say something like two business days before the meeting or three business, so that if we aren't meeting on Mondays?
Three business, let's go with three.
Three business days before the meeting?
I think that would make more sense, rather than tie us to a particular day.
So, 5:00 PM, three business days before the meeting is what you're proposing?
That works okay for staff.
Yeah.
I'm getting texts from citizens saying, please stick into your microphones. They're on.
They're not terribly sensitive, so, yeah.
You have to, like, put it in your mouth.
Okay, so, any other discussion on this before we do a quick straw poll on changing?
I just want to find out from staff if this is going to be possible.
Yes.
Because we have been inconsistent in getting the material, the packet, out to us in a timely manner, I think. But if you think you can pull that off, we've got a hard deadline, you can always give us a packet sooner than two business days or three business days before, but that's the deadline.
I mean, you know, extenuating circumstances may, you know, cause us to be even later than that every now and then, but that is what we're going to have.
Somebody has their leg amputated, and they can't quite reach the keyboard. I understand.
So, yeah, staff is good with changing that to three business days in advance. I will also say that public comments can be submitted, you know, up until the day of the public hearing. We will forward them on. They won't make their way into the packet, you know, if they're not with us prior to 5:00 PM, you know, the three days before, but they will be forwarded on to you, and, you know, we can add them to the packet after it goes out. So, the county council, what they do is they'll make a final version of the packet actually after the county council meeting, so if there are any, like, presentation items that aren't in the packet, then they can be added after the fact for the public record. So, unlike the county council where they will, you know, state that written public comment will be accepted until, you know, the following Wednesday after the meeting, we don't need to do that because you all vote on public hearing items at the meeting they're presented. So, you know, we don't really have any issue like that. If public comments come in after a public hearing at the Planning Commission and the item goes forward to the county council, then they would be included in the public comments that go to the county council.
I'd also like to make a suggestion that we change 5 dot 7, written citizen comment, that it say five working days before the Planning Commission meeting date. Now, it says 5:00 PM, the Wednesday.
Friday before.
So, five days before. That gives staff enough time to get the letters put together, and make sure that the packet is going to be available on time, you're not waiting to the last minute because you're getting last minute comments. Say this is the deadline, if you want to, want it in the packet, five days before.
You're talking about 5 dot 5 or 5 dot 6?
5 dot 7.
5 dot, oh, the written citizen comment.
So, 5 dot 6 would be three days business, and then 5 dot 7 would be five, so two business days before the packet material.
Do you want to specify in 5 that it's three business days?
Five business days.
Right, in, okay, let's go through 5 dot 7, and then we can go back up to the agenda.
Well, no, I see what you're saying. So, here's, so, we've got a rolling agenda here. So, 5 dot 5 is the agenda. So, agendas for regular meetings shall be provided by staff to all members at least three days prior to the meeting is 5 dot 5. So, three business days prior, if we wanted to be able to amend the agenda before the final packet, then that should probably be five business days as well?
Right.
And then, so, 5 dot 5 would be five business days, 5 dot 6 would be three business days, 5 dot 7 would be five business days, as far as relevant time.
Yep.
And does that map to what staff feels is doable and makes sense on their end?
5 seven would be three business days as well?
I think, yeah, I think that 5 seven should be three business days, although, I, you know, we would want to evaluate the.
I just, I would hate for you guys to delay in getting the packet out to us because you've got last minute public comment that needs to go into the packet. So, that's why I'm suggesting, alert the public that if they want their comments included in the packet, submit it five days before. Kind of make it easy on you guys.
Yeah, no, I get it.
So, I guess my, since we're not officially voting on this until the next meeting, maybe staff can think it over, and then if you've got suggestions about fine tuning these days, you can, it can be discussed further at the next meeting?
And not that you wouldn't think of it, but there's also the possibility of four business days, which then doesn't put you in the thing of waiting for the stuff to come in, and yet give citizens a chance to get something in the packet a little bit later.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, like, how, you know, critical that is, because if somebody hasn't seen, if the public hasn't seen the agenda yet, how likely are they to produce material for the packet? The only way is if it's a public hearing item, although, you know, that's where most of our substantive comment exists anyways, so they'll have seen the public notice, I suppose.
Yeah, I think after the agenda goes out, it's to be expected that we would be getting maybe some, some additional comments, but at least this would set us a timeframe that if it works for staff, it would certainly work for us.
So, so, here's what we've got so far, and I'd say forego a, we can do a quick straw poll if there's any great discussions, otherwise we move on. So, generally, we've got V5, change to five business days for when the agenda would be delivered by staff. V6, final packet, three business days before the meeting. V7, written citizen comment, either three or four days or five days, somewhere in that range beforehand. So, quick straw poll generally with that, any, yeah, any major concerns with that?
The only thing I'd say is under 5 dot 5, that it say three days, instead of three days prior to the meeting, three business days or three workdays.
Five, for the agenda, we're saying five business days.
For, on 5 dot 5, agendas, agendas shall be set at the direction of the chairperson. Agendas for regular meetings shall be provided by staff to all members at least three business days, to make that consistent with the meeting materials. And maybe if the packet is going to include the agenda, it's kind of redundant, but to make it consistent.
I think we can move on. Any other comments there? Did you have a different comment?
Are you moving on from that topic, or are we moving on from the bylaws?
No, I'm sorry, moving on from that topic, staying on the bylaws. We're still on the bylaws.
How are you going to do a straw poll with that?
On the adopting business days into the language? Sure, I mean, I think we can do a straw poll, or if anyone has any major concerns, just raise them. No concerns? Yeah, okay.
So, I had two relatively small items. One came up at the beginning of the meeting. I guess the bylaws say that we elect officers at the end of each meeting, and maybe we could just say at the first meeting of, so that we don't have to have that discussion again.
Good idea.
Is that 3 dot 2 dot A?
I guess.
So, scratch, as the last item of business, and then say at the first meeting.
Yep. And then the other one, you know, so somewhere in here, I don't have the number in front of me, it says, you know, in the issue of, issue about procedures, Roberts' rules shall prevail, and in our packet, you know, this, for this meeting, we've got all these Roberts' rules cheat sheets, and one of the things those cheat sheets tend to emphasize is that, you know, there should be no discussion if there isn't a motion on the floor, and we generally don't observe that, and I actually think it would be a bad idea for us to strictly observe that. So, I think, you know, either we can just informally agree that that's an aspect of Roberts' rules that we're not going to pay attention to, or we could put it, you know, I think the typical format of these bylaws is, you know, we're going to follow Roberts' rules with the following exceptions, and it lists things like, you know, you need four votes, et cetera. So, I think the chair would always have the option of calling for a motion, you know, saying, I don't want to discuss this anymore without a motion, but I don't think it helps us to be mandatory because sometimes we don't know what motion we want to make until we discuss, and of course, it's possible for someone to make a motion they don't support for the purpose of, you know, but that's confusing to the public to watch, you know, that, so.
The, I get your intent, and this is bylaw 5.9, Rules of Order. I see your intent. My concern about adding additional process to that particular item is, I can see situations where there may be a very contentious item, giving the chair the discretion to have, or really anybody on the commission, the ability to say, you know, point of order, return to Roberts' rules. I think we would hope that we always have a very open-minded and conversational body, but should there ever be an issue arise, I think having that standard there at least has a way to maintain uniformity.
So, just to be clear, I wasn't proposing that we strike 5 dot 9.
No, I know.
And I, and I did say that I think the chair should have the option of asking that a motion, you know, be on the floor, but I just don't think it's, you know, I think it should be up to the chair whether we do that or not, or.
Well, it's, so, yeah, I guess, I'm not sure I disagree with anybody, but it says, you know, in the event of a question over procedure arises, I assume that question. says, you know, in the event of a question over procedure arises, I assume that question has to be asked by one of us. And it seems like, a lot like my department used to work when I was chairing the department, which was we use Roberts rules of order when, oh, we use Roberts rules of order, um, when they were needed. And otherwise, we were okay using just kind of informal stuff. So I, I like it, the way it's written and, and the, but the clarity might be, I don't think it's just the chair. I think anybody on the commission can say, I think we need to go to Roberts rules of order.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, you know, the intent for, uh, Robert rules is, uh, is, you know, multi-pronged, but, um, I think one of the important intents is that you don't spend a ton of time discussing an item that doesn't have any chance of getting a motion, right? Um, so I, I, uh, I think it's fine to have a notice in the, in the bylaws that, you know, the chair may allow some discussion prior to a motion because, you know, there are many circumstances where, yeah, it's very natural to launch into discussion before a motion has been made. Um, and in the truer sense of Robert, Roberts rules, that shouldn't happen, but in reality, you know, it often makes sense. Um, and there may be instances where it doesn't appear that there's support for a motion at the outset, but by, or because discussion occurs, then, then there is a motion, right? And so, um, you know, you're welcome to propose some language for the bylaws. I, I, I like the idea of having, you know, some mention of that in there because it is kind of, um, you know, it's certainly in violation of Roberts rules, but, um, but it makes sense.
Kevin, do you have any specific language in mind? Or if not, would you wanna submit something before the next?
I can submit something.
Okay. Jalen, did you have a comment?
I would, just thinking off the top of my head.
People are gonna be texting saying they can't hear you.
Just thinking off the top of my head, I would say something like discussion prior to a motion being on the table. Is that the discretion of the chair?
That's what I was gonna suggest. Ooh, nice save.
Um, discussion prior to a motion on the table shall be at the discretion of the chair. Did I capture that? Okay.
Shall be permitted at the discretion of the chair.
Discussion prior to a motion on the table shall be permitted at the discretion of the chair.
Shall or may. Shall is must be.
Oh, may.
I think may should be better.
I, I agree.
Okay, good call. Um, do we feel need to take a straw poll on this or should we move forward and revisit it? Perfect. All right. Any other comments related to the bylaws? Um, the only, I, I don't know how to capture this, but I, I will say it related back to, um, uh, shoot, where the telecommunications.
That's the V fifteen and sixteen.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you. Um, I travel a lot for work and I have taken advantage of being able to call in. And I think that in our modern world, especially in a remote community where there are many remote workers, I, I fully support this method of communication. I also think there is a point to which this could be overused perhaps. And I wonder as a body if we want to discuss some limit to, um, uh, either missed meetings in person or missed meetings overall before. I, actually, I think there might be a mention of that in here somewhere, and I don't know where it is, but, yeah. Um, but I think we should revisit that and just talk about if that's something we want to enforce or make stricter and what that means. Um, there's open meetings, regular meetings.
It might be, uh, six, six, there's faithful attendance at meetings and performance.
Six, six, thank you.
So, yeah, V one dash, what, dot one.
Since it, circumstances prevent faithful, oops, attendance and performance of the planning commission, duties that members should desire for the planning commission.
Do you think that's sufficient, Emily?
Um, I, I, I do in general, um, but I, I think that, um, there may be cases where a commissioner may attend multiple, or may miss multiple meetings. And, you know, we've had moments where we've not had a quorum because of people not attending. And even if we just had stronger language about noticing to staff, I think that would be an appropriate addendum to what exists. Um, so we have, should circumstances arrive where a planning commission member is unable to attend a scheduled meeting, the member shall be responsible for notifying the chair or planning department staff as soon as possible. Um, I guess my question to the body is do we feel that as a group, there is a need to take any sort of additional steps beyond that? Or if not, I'm comfortable as well?
I'm, I'm not terribly comfortable with, you know, setting some criterion of a certain number. But I do think commissioners should tell staff if they aren't gonna be at a meeting. Obviously, an automobile accident on the way to the meeting is an excuse, but if you know you're not gonna make a meeting, you ought to tell them.
I would suggest, uh, that in addition to notifying staff, that notifying the chair because, uh, you don't want the chair to be in the dark. And sometimes there's miscommunication or no communication about who's gonna be able to attend and to have staff and chair on the same, having, basing future decisions or decisions on, uh, information that's shared between both is a, a good strike of business. So I would say and staff, not just or staff.
Yeah, so right now it says chair or planning department staff. And we, I would suggest changing that to an and.
Um, and I would just also add, um, should circumstances arise, um, they shall be responsible for notifying the chair or planning department staff. Um, I, I think there's unable to attend in person and unable to attend via telecommunication because we need to be, have people in person to have a quorum. But then also, we've had times people have said they'll call in. And I've tried to call in and not be able to connect. I understand there are extenuating circumstances, but, um, I, I would, I'd be happy to take a stab at rewriting that language and suggesting something before our next meeting, but I just wanted to raise that.
But what's the intent? Are you suggesting that there should be a limit to the number of meetings you can participate in by phone or video? Or are you saying?
Not, not necessarily. And I know under Article seven, we have some more, um, options there. So I think just capturing the fact that we need to take responsibility for communicating if we're gonna be attendance or not. Um, I agree having that, any commissioners who will miss a meeting inform the chair and planning commission staff. I agree with that. I just wanted to open this for discussion. Um, it's come up as a sort of sidebar item at some point over the last year, and I wanted to raise it to you.
I know the, the couple of times I haven't been able to attend, I basically write the whole commission. That makes, makes sense.
In there somewhere, can we put like and, like a phone call in? I mean, notify the staff when you have to call in to, I mean...
Oh, like when you need to, when you need to participate remotely?
Yes.
That would be appreciated. With a certain number of days in advance would be helpful for staff.
Yeah.
Just so that, could, because, you know, given the current state of audio, video and telecommunications infrastructure in the county, it often requires a little bit of setup. And so, you know, building that into our schedule would be helpful.
I agree with that. Um, so I'll, I'll, um, take responsibility for sharing a draft of that language back to the planning commission in time for us to get that to the next packet.
One other thing that, uh, Cricket told, talked to me about was, uh, commissioners that came to meetings apparently unprepared, that they weren't familiar with the material in the packet. I don't know if that's something that we wanna address in the bylaws or not. I mean, if somebody doesn't have the time or interest to fully participate, I think they should resign.
But how do you, how do you judge that?
Well, that's a hard... I know, yeah. You're, you're right. But, um, I don't know if the statement in our bylaws that we will endeavor to become very familiar with all the materials in the packet prior to the meetings is necessary or not, but...
So what if you added the word preparation and a comma between faithful and attendance?
That'd be fine with me. Good idea.
That, I mean, I, I don't think you need to get more specific than that. So...
Any comment on that as an idea? Otherwise, we'll just capture that in that rewritten note for the meeting our next meeting.
I think that would, that would get to what I am expressing.
Great. Um, any other comments related to the bylaws?
Okay, so we kinda strayed from the straw poll approach, but I think that's fine. We've got, you know, it sounded like there was plenty of consensus on all of the items. So we probably will not include the straw poll results in the minutes, but we will bring back to you red line changes and have it as an action item. Um, and then, you know, as per the bylaws, they need to go to the county council for approval, actually, so...
Everything that was discussed was proposed unanimously.
Great. Um, let's move on. Um, our next discussion item is Roberts...
Oh, excuse me, one more thing. I think it would be good to have a date on the bylaws and maybe a signature line for the chair. And if the council has to approve, then the chair of the council.
Good idea. Like last updated by, approved. Yeah. We can do that. I think maybe on the, what do you want, on the front page or the back page?
The last page.
Last page.
Okay.
All right. Um, let's move on. So our next discussion item is Roberts rules, which I don't have context for this discussion item.
I, I think the idea, I don't know if Zachariah was planning on giving us a little primer, but the idea was just to throw this out so that we all at least have the same kind of information. Um, so we know how to make motions, how to object, how to adjourn, how to, um, make amendments and that sort of thing. So if we just read through that, I think it might be, uh, if we have questions, enough questions that we all need to be clear as to how we interpret Roberts rules, we could bring that to another meeting.
Yeah, the, the intent here from staff was not to have a lengthy discussion about Roberts rules. Um, I am in conversation with, uh, somebody from the, I don't know, it's like the parliamentarian society or something like that to, um, come in and provide a Roberts rules training to, uh, the county council and, um, all appointed boards and commissions because I do think that there are so many common, you know, circumstances that are really easy to like, you know, um, you know, understand and, and work through. And then there are a lot of nuanced situations. And, you know, as soon as you start getting into nested, um, you know, motions and amendments to motions, uh, people get confused. And I just think it'd be good for like, you know, all elected officials and, and appointed board and commission members to have that training. Um, however, I would encourage you to, uh, look through these cheat sheets because these do co- cover, you know, the vast majority of circumstances that we are, um, or scenarios that we are going to find ourselves in. And, uh, you might consider just printing them out and having them on the dais with you each time. Uh, again, they're, these are the most common procedures. File them away on your tablets or whatever you bring. Um, that's fine too. And so for today's purposes, we can move on. But, uh, you know, it's, it's just good for everybody to have a baseline familiarity with Roberts rules parliamentary procedures, so...
I think some training would be wonderful. And on the topic of training, um, there was some confusion that came up last year related to the training around the Open Meetings Act. And I don't know that I feel like that was resolved as far as who needed to revisit that and how often. Not something we need to discuss today, but if staff wouldn't mind just shooting out an update to that, that'd be really great. Thank you.
I can't remember what we determined on it either.
Glad I'm not alone.
But...
Um, okay. Any other comments related to that discussion item? Okay, um, final discussion item, and I think it would maybe be nice to take a five-minute break before the, oh, the open hearing. Um, final discussion item is the work plan and upcoming efforts from staff.
Yeah, so, uh, in the past, we have had planning commission retreats. Um, I think those are good, uh, because they, um, help planning commissioners at, at staggered points in their tenure on the planning commission kind of, uh, get on to the same level of understanding about ongoing projects and, you know, primary issues in the county. Uh, so I'm curious if you all are interested in doing that again. Uh, we didn't hold one in 2019, but we did do it in 2018. It was, maybe we did do one in 2019. Um, 2018, we had one. Uh, in, um, in prior retreats, we have identified, uh, you know, planning priorities for the planning commission. Uh, we've tried to identify planning commissioners who would have the capacity and interest to, you know, take on some research and, you know, extra responsibilities, uh, to help staff's limited capacity. Uh, so we could do that as well. Um, I wanted to make you aware of, uh, some planning efforts that we know are in the pipeline so that you are aware of them and start getting some feedback on, uh, just early thoughts on those and, and how you might want to, uh, think about scheduling these efforts because they are time-consuming and require a lot of logistics. And staff is really trying to turn inward and look at some of our own internal procedures right now. And we'd like to get through those as well. We're doing a lot of outward planning work, but, um, we know for sure that, um, there is $150,000 set aside in the fund balance to support, um, uh, general plan and zoning code rewrite or update. Um, if we can get away with just an update instead of a rewrite. Uh, staff successfully acquired funding for a regional transportation plan that we will be working on with UDOT, the city of Moab, uh, SITLA and San Juan County. We also received funding to complete a, uh, Moab area transportation master plan, a unified or joint local transportation master plan with the city of Moab. So, the Spanish Valley Transportation Plan was updated in 2008 and it's due for, uh, an update. The city of Moab has never had a transportation master plan. Um, so we received funding from UDOT through their technical assistance planning program to, to create a, a unified local transportation plan. We also intend to apply for what I'm calling kind of the third phase or the third leg of transportation planning in upcoming months, which is a transit study. This would be a public transit study, not, um, uh, not inside the parks. So I don't want anybody to get the wrong idea. Uh, this is truly a public transit, you know, study. Um, so we've got those three studies. Uh, I shared with Garrish a little bit of my thoughts on, uh, the general plan work. Um, other communities might call these comprehensive plans. So, um, could general plan and comprehensive plan are often interchangeable and they include, you know, various elements of them. Uh, usually there's a vision statement and a land use element and a demographics element and a circulation or transportation element. There's a parks and open space element, a housing element, an economic development element. And, you know, we've got versions of all of those in our existing general plan, which was updated in 2012. Um, you know, from my perspective, and I wanna get planning commission feedback on this, but from my perspective, you know, you always have to balance, uh, the reality that planning is an ongoing practice and it never goes away even once you, even when you have the plan done, right? But there's also the threat of planning exhaustion within a community. And you don't wanna just be in a perpetual state of like trying to figure out what you wanna be. Um, and so the way that I've been thinking about our general plan, uh, update or rewrite is to, um, avoid like a really fluffy, high level, you know, visioning exercise that's, you know, really in some ways, um, esoteric. Um, and, and to really focus on the elements that are of most import to, uh, the planning commission, the county council and our citizens. And so, you know, in thinking about that, you know, we have a pretty strong housing plan right now. We've done a lot of work in land use... We've done a lot of work in land use planning over the last couple of years with our high-density housing overlay and the overnight accommodations overlay and, you know, and thinking about some areas that need small area plans. And I think those small area plans still deserve some attention. We've got almost a, we probably have a 75% complete economic development plan. We're working on these transportation plans. You know, so for me, a little bit of work in the visioning area, but not like really fluffy, high-level stuff, like really focused work in that area, looking at the land use plan and more specifically some small areas, and then a parks and open space plan, I think are like the most important areas in my mind that need attention. And then, in an ideal world, your zoning code, you know, basically perfectly reflects the goals that are established in your general plan. In reality, that almost never happens, because the two are offset by many years, right? The community will go through a general plan update and then, you know, they'll continually modify their land use code, or maybe they'll do a big rewrite, and then five years later, they'll do a general plan update. And so, my idea is to really look for a firm that specializes in code writing, but has some experience doing long-range planning and comprehensive planning, so that we could actually use the same firm to, to really take a close look at our zoning code and do like a big unified update of it, so that it was all, you know, written in the same plain language and, you know, just had more consistency throughout it. So, that's my thought on the matter.
And...
I would welcome other staff to weigh in on that as well in this.
I have been trying to get a joint meeting of the Moab Planning Commission and our planning commission, just to kind of talk about visioning and goals for a couple of years. And I've had some commissioners who have shown interest, Moab city planning commissioners who have shown interest in doing that, but have never got it pulled off. I think it just, that kind of discussion, even though it might be kind of general, it's going to get us on the same page. Fits right into, to the type of planning effort that Zachariah is talking about, and I would encourage us to try to get that to happen.
I agree. I think having time to go deep on some of this would be useful. I also really appreciate the work staff has done in the last year, especially the last nine months. We've had some really big things on our plate as a community, and I feel like you've kept the pacing very consistent, kept the eye on the goal, left time for conversation, getting feedback from citizens as well as interfacing with the council. So, I feel like the last year has been a really, really great example of that kind of cooperation. Having a retreat to kind of reset on the goals for the next year, 18 months, would, I imagine, help with that.
Yeah, so I think what Zachariah outlined sounds good to me, and in particular, you know, avoiding too much fluffiness. I think that's important. We've only got so much time, and I think we should spend it on, you know, things that are actually going to make a difference for us. I also liked your remarks about making sure our land use code is in sync with our, our general plan.
I would like to recommend that we break for five minutes really quick before the hearing, and then any remaining parts of this conversation we'll bring up in future considerations. Okay? Great.
Yeah, thanks.
So, you should be good if you're on airplane mode.
So, I don't know if this would be helpful to you?
Oh, yes, please. All right, it's 5 o'clock. So, we are going to open our public hearing. This is a, a public hearing on the Rancho Nuevo PUD overlay and preliminary plat. So, just before we get started, a few things. First of all, when you do come up to speak, if everybody, including the applicant, whomever, come up to the podium, and you have to really like get close with the microphone, because the people who are watching on YouTube otherwise can't hear. If you're this far back, they, they can't hear you. If you also wouldn't mind, please silencing your phones. And if you do get up at any time, go out into the hallway, just please be mindful that noise travels back in here quite a bit. So, just please take your conversation back into the atrium or outside. Yes. Yes. Thank you. Perfect. There are cards in the back of the room. If you want to make a comment, please write your name on the card. You can bring it up to Kenny here. And then, also, when you speak, we'll ask you to state your full name before you make your comments. Everybody will have three minutes to comment. And I believe we have a timer up here for somebody. If not, we'll use a phone. Do you want a timer? Garrish, can you be the timer? Lynn?
I thought for public hearings, we didn't require cards, so...
It just makes it easier.
We want to establish some certainty. I mean, you don't have to have a card if it's on the agenda. Just, just a question.
Yeah.
Are we not going to hear from the developer or what their plans are first?
We are, so, yep, thank you. So, the way we're going to run this, first, we're going to invite staff to give their report. We'll invite the developer to come up, speak to the project, then we'll have hearings from the public, and then we'll also invite the applicant to respond at the end. Okay? Final thing, please, if you want to make a comment, we would love for you to speak, but when other people are speaking, please, no conversation, no side notes. Thank you. So, staff, if you wouldn't mind starting with your report.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, once again, staff will start this off, present the application. The applicant will address the planning commission. There will be public comment, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to respond to that comment. So, this is a planned unit development application. We will often use the acronym PUD. PUD is Planned Unit Development. The applicant is Glenn Lent, and the property addresses are 2775, 2753, and 2757 Nuevo Court. So, there are three separate lots of record that are included in the Planned Unit Development, which is a type of subdivision in this application. The combined acreage of all of those lots is 5.71, and the existing zoning on that acreage is large lot residential. The land around it is also residential in its use. There's one vacant lot next to it, and the lots currently are vacant. So, to be clear, a PUD or a Planned Unit Development is an overlay. It goes on top of the existing zone district, and it is a possible avenue towards a more flexible, a more custom-designed subdivision, okay? So, we have standard subdivision regulations, a Planned Unit Development. If the overlay is applied to the parcel, gives the, a developer the ability to have smaller setbacks and a different road standard. And, and there are opportunities for bonus density to be included in a Planned Unit Development. And one route to a bonus density is through an open space dedication of 20% or more. The other route to bonus density is by providing deed-restricted affordable housing. In this instance, the applicant has requested bonus density associated with an open space And so, the process is this. There's a public hearing at planning commission, public hearing at county council. It's a legislative or discretionary process in terms of the PUD overlay component. So, there's a lot of discretion that the planning commission and the county council have in terms of saying yes or no to the overlay component. Now, if the overlay component, the PUD overlay, is denied, that doesn't deny an applicant the ability to subdivide, okay? They would still have the ability to subdivide under the standard subdivision regulations. So, I want to make sure that you are all clear in terms of the process that we're following here. As part of the Planned Unit Development overlay request, the applicant is required to submit a master plan. The master plan is a document that's recorded alongside a PUD overlay approval, if approved, and that governs what can be developed after that. So, preliminary plat would be the next step, and then final plat after that. In this instance, the applicant has requested a combined master plan and preliminary plat approval, and so, those two documents look virtually the same, okay? In this instance, the applicant had been scheduled for a public hearing on December 10th. That public hearing was postponed due to questions around the, around compliance with the noticing standards, so onsite noticing was not provided far enough in advance of the meeting. So, you all had a discussion on this application at the December 10th meeting. This is the official public hearing today. I was not in attendance at the December 10th meeting, but you will note that the staff recommendation has been updated from December 10th to today, okay? So, staff's recommendation has been updated to deny, and I would maybe add some nuance to that, that it a minimum postpone action on it. That is an option to you, and that may be something that the applicant wants to discuss with you. But, but our, our recommendation is no longer to recommend approval or send a favorable So, that isn't, that isn't a recommendation based on our stance of the PUD per se. I think that there is a lot of reason to allow this developer and, you know, many developers to deviate from the standard subdivision regulations and, and to be more creative in their subdivision design, do more cluster development, reduce the amount of land that they ultimately change from impervious surface to impervious surface. But in this case, we, we have reservations about a number of items associated with the design of this subdivision. So, I'll go through those concerns now, and then I will just answer questions about the remainder of the staff report, okay? So, I'm not going to go through every element of the subdivision evaluation. So, at the time that this staff report was written, we have also received some information from the applicant and the engineer since the time that this was published. You all have that in your inbox. We did not have time to put that in the packet, and we can bring it up on the screen if you need, you know, a reference to it. But at the time that this was written, the concerns that we raised were the following. So, we raised a concern about the number of lots requested and the number of dwelling units that could be built upon the lots created in this subdivision. We raised concerns about drainage and soil stability and, and, and the detention basin that was associated with the, the drainage design. And we have not provided a whole lot more nuance to our position on the open space component of the subdivision and the connection between that and the bonus density, but I would, you know, I'll go through that as well. So, there's language in the staff report regarding subsurface water and potentially unstable soils, the location of the test pits that were drilled or dug as part of the geotechnical analysis, the capacity of the detention basin and the, the outflow or the spillway, the volume and the course of that spillway. In each of those cases, the county engineer frankly is, is satisfied by the applicant and their geotechnical engineer's response to his latest email about it. Well, let me back that up. Not, not 100% satisfied, but he has not, you know, stated that he is opposed to the subdivision by any stretch. The test pit locations, the geotechnical engineer for the applicant provided an explanation as to why the GPS units don't match the exact location of, of where they were in the report. They, you know, reiterated that the volume and rate of water coming out of the detention basin would meet the county standards of .03 CFS per acre. basin would meet the county standards of .03 CFS per acre, so, and actually are below that. The geotechnical engineer provided an opinion that the likelihood of affecting the springs was low, did not provide that much context to the statement, and so, you know, I've asked the Grand County engineer to further evaluate that, but, you know, the county engineer has stated there may be, you know, some additional conditions that could be, you know, placed on the developer, but that none of them are going to, you know, eliminate the ability to develop that property. So, moving on to the next, oh, and there's a concern in the staff report raised about water from the detention basin being released across a neighboring property. The Grand County standards don't prohibit water from going across a neighboring property so long as it meets the outflow rate limits and generally follows the historical course of water that would flow from one property to another. So, without a doubt, post-development offsite flow cannot exceed pre-development offsite flow, meaning a development cannot put more water onto an adjacent property than would historically have occurred. And furthermore, if it meets the standards of the storm drain design criteria, then, you know, you can put water onto an adjacent property, it just has to be under that limit and follow the historical course. Nevertheless, I think staff still has some concerns about, you know, final engineering design, and I think that that is a legitimate reason to at least postpone or condition an application. Regarding the number of lots requested, we have reevaluated the maximum number of dwelling units that could be accommodated by Nuevo Court. Unfortunately, this is a situation where the applicant, you know, was under one impression for a long time, and, you know, now here we are, and staff has a different interpretation of the code, and the reality is that that's in part due to the development review process and, you know, staff's ongoing evaluation of an application over time as it moves through the development review process, as well as comments raised by neighboring landowners. And in, you know, all of those cases, we have a responsibility to make sure that we are adhering to our land use code, and so, it is unfortunate, and I am sorry that this is how it has, you know, proceeded for the developer, but at the end of the day, our current evaluation of Nuevo Court is that it is a dead-end street, and it is close to 1,000 feet in length from Old City Park, which is the maximum length of a dead-end street or a cul-de-sac as per our code. And there are 11 constructed dwelling units on the property, or served by Nuevo Court already, okay? One parcel on Nuevo Court does not currently have a residence on it, but by being a lot of record, we in effect have to maintain that property's right to develop a dwelling unit on it. So, that in effect would mean that Nuevo Court is sort of locked into 12 dwelling units, not including the three parcels owned by Mr. Lent, okay? So, our conclusion has been that those three lots that are owned by Mr. Lent can accommodate a maximum of eight dwelling units. That would, to be clear, prohibit any other properties on Nuevo Court from having an accessory dwelling unit because the land use code and the construction standards limit dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs to 20 dwelling units, okay? So, initially, we had been evaluating the proposed ranch on Nuevo Court as its own cul-de-sac, but after further evaluation, the road supervisor, county engineer, and staff have concluded that it could be seen, you know, that Nuevo Court itself can only serve 20 dwelling units, okay? So, the issue here is that the developer's obviously proposing more than eight lots, and in the CCNRs, each of those lots is actually mandated to have an accessory dwelling unit, okay? I will admit, you know, staff worked hard on creating and updating our accessory dwelling unit standards, and, you know, we think that good planning practice is to, you know, accommodate accessory dwelling units for a variety of reasons, but in this case, the, you know, technical standards of the land use code and construction standards were prohibited. Lastly, there is the issue of open space and its connection to a bonus density request, and I would say that staff still sees plenty of benefits of designing open space and the buffer into this subdivision, although, you know, like in our original staff report, we still maintain, you know, questions as to whether that open space has the characteristics and size and location adequate to justify the bonus density. You know, we are aware that the title commitment needs to be updated. We typically require that an applicant provide an updated title commitment prior to a county council meeting so that we get the most current version of it prior to primetime, but, but that is noticed in the staff report, just so that everybody is aware. So, considering all of these issues, staff's, you know, recommendation is to deny, potentially postpone if there is, you know, some appetite for continuing to work with the developer and to modify this. That would, you know, obviously be up to the developer as well, but there you have it. So, again, I'm not going to go through all of the elements of the staff report that's in the packet so that you all and the public can read it beforehand. It was also provided ahead of the last discussion of this development, but happy to answer specific questions that you may have.
I have one, Zachariah. Did the county issue a clearing permit or excavation permit of any sort to the developer?
No.
Because today I noticed that there was quite a bit of disturbance on site already. I was wondering how that kind of happened, but if you didn't, they didn't come to you and ask for an excavation permit?
I'd like staff to, please, you mentioned that Nuevo Court is already at 3,000 foot or roughly 1,000 foot length from Old City Park. Could you comment on, I mean, regardless of the number of possible dwelling units that you've already addressed, what implications that would have for the master plan that's placed in front of us? Because I don't see another alternative to constructing this if you said that this couldn't be its own individual cul-de-sac. I just, it doesn't even feel like this is relevant to this, given the fact that that in of itself would have a major implication on how many lots might even be able to be developed here off of Nuevo Court, on these particular parcels.
I think what you're asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you're asking is, you know, could they be allowed to develop a road off of Nuevo Court if...
Right, and I think from my understanding of the staff report, the answer is no, at least not beyond the few however many feet that gets into that 1,000.
Well, so, we have asked, but have not received a full distance from Old City Park Road to the end of this proposed cul-de-sac, so we don't know exactly how long this is intended to be. So, I think what you're asking is, you know, does it meet the standard of not exceeding 1,000 feet, and I can't say with certainty.
Thank you.
I think when I looked at that last time, I think, you know, driving to the very end there is still less than 1,000 feet.
Right.
I'd equate, I don't think this might end up making much difference for this particular proposal, but my recollection is on previous PUDs, when we're calculating like the maximum density with a bonus, you take out areas of, you know, greater than 30% slope, and that, it seems like that wasn't done here. Looks like there's about a half acre of unbuildable area, so that would make the maximum 12 instead of 13, I think.
I think that's correct. Now, I think that it's, I mean, so, we did discuss that in, in-house or in the department, and that standard is in the, is in a different section from PUDs, so, you know, I think it leaves some room for interpretation as to whether or not it applies to a PUD situation where in this case, the applicant selected to, you know, dedicate the area that is, you know, a steep slope as part of the open space, and so, there was no, you know, potential to really build there anyways. So, but, but I think, you know, it deserves some attention, but may need, may need a legal interpretation as well, so.
There's a question to see if we can turn up the room speakers. I don't know if that's possible.
I think it can cause feedback on the mics if we do that.
I can't hear in the back.
You can't hear in the back? All right, well, we'll work on projection. Any other questions for staff?
Zachariah, maybe you could help me understand this plat. What is the area up in the upper right corner in gray? What is that supposed to represent? It says that's an AE zone or something, but I don't, that doesn't make, there's nothing, nothing in the legend that describes what that is.
I think there was a request to maybe turn the screen a little. We could probably still see it if it was flat against the wall in terms of, and then more people could see it in the audience. Thank you very much, Kenny.
That is denoting the floodplain.
That's a 100-year floodplain?
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, so, at this point, we're going to invite the applicant Glenn Lent to come up and speak. And Glenn, if you wouldn't mind standing at the podium and projecting into the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. You know, we're obviously a little bit frustrated with the situation, to be honest with you. You know, and Zachariah, I'll say this again, and I told him this in his office, you know, when you work seven months or eight months on a project, and then all of a sudden have a negative recommendation instead of a positive recommendation, and then you also have your density essentially cut in half, that's frustrating. That's frustrating for us. You know, I understand the interpretation of Nuevo Court being a cul-de-sac. The problem is, this is the first we've ever heard of that. Everything up to this point has been that our cul-de-sac was a cul-de-sac. So, you know, we are flexible. We've had, you know, a geotechnical report done on the property. We've had two amendments to that geotechnical report to explain the groundwater situation. We've dug five test pits anywhere from six to 10 feet, most of them being 10 feet. We never hit groundwater. The six-foot one we hit, which was the closest to the edge, we hit hard, hard, almost rock-type material. So, none of the test pits, we hit any groundwater, and we really can't figure out how we would even affect the flow, okay? We're maintained, as Zachariah mentioned, we're required to contain any additional runoff that we create onsite, and that's what we do. We do it with the detention ponds. We're willing to move the detention pond off of the current location where it sits on the, kind of on the edge, and move that to, you know, more towards the road itself if that helps people feel better about it. Again, we're talking about, you know, this thing filling once every 100 years, but we're willing to move forward in that direction. So, we feel like we're flexible. We're not sure how to handle the new interpretation of density. You know, if it truly means that we're going to get eight units, we really wanted to do ADUs on this property, I'll be honest with you. We thought that's what the community wanted. We thought they needed affordable housing. It's a travesty to have a lot and not have that ability to do it. So, I think we, you know, we will look at our options moving forward. If we truly feel like the winds have changed and we're going to end up with eight units, we'll have to regroup and decide which direction we want to move forward. So, I'm, I know there's a lot of people who want to make comments, and I'd love to hear them, and I'd also like a moment to answer some of the questions as well.
Glenn, if you want to stay up there in case the planning commission has any questions for you.
Sure. So, I postponed the hearing on December 10th because of, it didn't appear that the noticing requirements that our county has were met, and when I went to the site today, I'm not sure that the noticing requirements were met because you have one sign on a telephone pole or a power pole on one lot, and I guess, a statement is, we have an interest, a public interest in making sure that noticing is done the way that Grand County prescribes. So, if you do come back with a different proposal at some time in the future, I would just advise you to follow our noticing requirements to the T.
So, we did, there are two signs. There's two different signs on there. We noticed them the way that they asked us to. It's actually a state statute that requires that.
Glenn, could you speak to the length of the proposed cul-de-sac that you have on the master plan?
You know, I don't remember exactly. I want to say, I want to say it's close to 500 feet. I believe most of lots are 80 feet, so, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, times 80, it's close to 500.
Any other questions for Glenn? All right, thank you. I am going to just call names by the cards here. If you haven't turned in a card, once we've done through, if you'd like to come up and speak, you're welcome to. Just a reminder, please state your name before you make your comments, and Garrish will be setting a timer for three minutes. He'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left to go, so you can keep talking, but he'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left to go, and please do speak into the microphone. So, Ludine?
I would just like to say my name is Ludine Merritt. Most of you in this room may know me. I've been a realtor for over 41 years going on in the community. When I first was called to list the property, I went out and I did my job. I called a buyer. I sold the property within 24 hours. I seem to think that that's a little bit of people's upset, why some of the people are upset here. I have gone to meetings for the last five years to create the overlay zone, and we have created... created the zone, it doesn't really look like we're using that zone, um, and more than anything is, this is creating tax base, this is creating taxes for Grand County, this is creating affordability. I know I've heard smirks about in this room that this is not an affordability project. It is. I, I don't, I'm trying to just understand that this developer has done things that have been asked before on other developments, they have done the things the way the state statute reads, we're trying to bring in tax base, we're trying to bring in services, and trying to help the community with the overlay zone, and it doesn't feel like the overlay zone is being used properly. It feels like we're told something, we come in and we do something, and then all of a sudden, it's completely different. So, in regards to the water on the property, this property had a basement, there was no water in that basement, there's no, they have, the developers have used the, their, their engineers, they have done their proper testing, and I feel like because someone is coming in, trying to do something different, change is hard, change is really hard. I've seen so many changes in this community, I have dealt with, I don't know how many different general plans. Every time we seem to get something going, all of a sudden, it's not a great idea.
Thirty seconds.
So I just want to say, thank you, please give this development the opportunity as the overlay zone does require, thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Nance?
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Nance. I own my home on a half acre at two-four-three-five Old City Park across, road across from what is known as the Shiloh. My backyard abuts the western edge of the property, which is being discussed this evening for development. At some date last summer, I believe it was in July, I received an anonymous tip-off from a person, or persons, alerting me that a developer by the name of Glenn Lent had purchased the acreage behind my home from an old friend of mine, Betty Tibbets. The, the developer purchased the acreage from Betty's children. I feel sure Katrina and her brother Jalane needed to sell off their mother's property, uh, land for financial reasons, uh, that land that we are discussing, which was left to Katrina and Jalane upon Betty's death. Betty Tibbets and I had a special friendship, so much so that I put a gate in my fence at the southeast edge of my property so that I could easily visit and check on her and other friends in my neighborhood on Nuevo Court. That will no longer be available to me if this development goes through. Betty and I spent many long hours walking her land, discussing our passion for gardening, for the animals that live there, telling each other our stories. Betty used to own most of the land that is bounded by Nuevo Court and Old City Park, including my property and three of my neighbors' property. Betty was the first one to take me down to her spring, telling me how lucky she was to have it on her property, and allowing me access to walk there whenever I chose, and I chose to a lot. I was upset when she died, Betty was old Moab, very old Moab, her family's stories were breathtaking, about Butch Cassidy and his gang, and how he interacted with her family, about farming and ranching, about the importance of land, land to be simply enjoyed for providing habitat to the animals that live there, that we both love so dearly. I knew the land was inherited by her daughter Katrina upon her death, and I felt safe in the feeling that Katrina respected her mother's wishes to leave it largely undeveloped. So it was a huge surprise to me that on the afternoon of Friday, the eleventh of October, while I was resting, that I began to hear earth-moving equipment noise coming from behind my backyard on Betty's property. I ran out to my property boundary and saw that heavy equipment was in the process of digging a large hole within feet of my east boundary.
Thirty seconds.
I was completely caught off guard as to this event, thinking that if the tip-off I received was truly accurate, that we, as neighbors, would have been alerted to earth-moving activities, we were not. The next day, on the twelfth of October, I wrote an email to Community and Economic Development Director, Director Zachariah Levine, inquiring as to the legality of what I had witnessed and filmed the day before. Zachariah emailed me on the fourteenth of October to tell me that the owner developer had not yet received approval for any work.
Three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Apple, Applebaum?
My name is Robert Applebaum, I live at twenty-four-oh-nine Old City Park Road. I've been here for four years. My wife Shelley and I bought a house, um, in this neighborhood because we think it's beautiful, it's wonderful, uh, our neighbors are excellent. We moved here because the large lot residential fit our needs. The two structures per acre seemed like it was adequate for space, for gardening, and the things that we enjoy in our life as far as privacy and so on. Um, I don't believe that the development that's being proposed fits that need, fits that suits, uh, fits that need. On page three of their application that was provided by, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, two-thirds of the way down the page, it says, "Surrounding land uses are all residential and will be compatible with the proposed Rancho Nuevo community." The word "compatible" means of two things being able to exist or occur together without conflict, or well-suited, or consistent. Jamming thirteen units into five acres is not at all well-suited or at all consistent with the existing units of that neighborhood. I would like to see that the neighborhood could, uh, maintain the charm that it currently has, and I'm sure some of my neighbors have better prepared statements than this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Bob Ratkey?
Good evening, um, my name is Bob Ratkey, my wife Wendy and I own the property on twenty-six-ninety-three Nuevo Court, which is, we share two property boundaries with the proposed development. Um, I had to write my thoughts down, uh, sorry about this, uh, some of them have changed since the presentation by staff, but I will go through this. I did submit two letters addressing items I think are issues with this particular application. Um, to name some of those issues, the value of the open space, uh, and how this application does not, in my opinion, does not comply with the requirements for a PUD, um, the stormwater design has issues, um, and the cul-de-sac issues with design and number of dwelling units, or issues I presented in my letter, letters. Tonight, I'd like to kind of go a little different direction. I believe, um, the LUC, the Land Use Code, as you are well, well, aware of, it, it does provide the commission with a degree of discretionary latitude in making decisions with these type of applications, and I think that was stated earlier by Zachariah. Um, the latitude comes into play when looking at the general provisions of the code and, um, and the purpose, um, of the general, of the LUC. It, the, um, general provisions provide a general direction and vision for the Land Use Code, um, such as preventing overcrowding of buildings and sites to the detriment of rural community character. This applicant has requested a set of, a setback variance down to five feet between home, or to the lots. I just want you to picture a row of two-story houses only ten feet apart in our neighborhood, which some of you have visited today. Compare that to the, and compare that to the existing rural setting that we have. It just doesn't seem like it will blend in, and it, and, um, it, it will be a detriment to the rural character that we currently enjoy. Also, the applicant is requesting a density bonus in exchange for community open space. The proposed, the proposed open space just-
Thirty seconds.
Oh, phew, that goes fast. Will not provide only meaningful, it will, just, it won't provide any meaningful community open space. It is small, isolated, and uninviting, it does not meet the requirements listed in the LUC. In fact, the CCNR submitted will, with the application, state that in Article Five, it is intended for the common use of the owners and is designated for the exclusive use of the owners. He has started grading and scraping vegetation, it makes me wonder how he values the community aspect of this open space.
Time's up.
Thank you. Susan Belagamba?
Good evening, my name is Sue Belagamba, and I live at twenty-seven-eighty Nuevo Court. I want to thank you for this opportunity to comment on the proposed Rancho Nuevo PUD and subdivision. I also really want to thank you guys for serving on the Planning Commission. I can imagine that it's a thankless job at times, like tonight, but I really appreciate you willing to serve the citizens of Grand County. I purchased my home in nineteen-eighty-seven, and I have lived there for over thirty years. It's a peaceful neighborhood, we enjoy stunning views of the Little Sound Mountains and the Red Rocks, which you saw today on the site visit, and plentiful wildlife due to its location near Pat Creek and the mature cottonwood trees, and the numerous springs. It's a wonderful, quiet neighborhood, and one that I feel fortunate to be a part of. However, today, I feel that our way of life and our peaceful, peaceful neighborhood is at risk, and thus I am here tonight to speak to the Planning Commission. Last week, I submitted a letter that addresses my primary concerns regarding the Rancho Nuevo proposed development, and hopefully that letter provides insight and awareness, including the state and federal laws, such as the Clean Water Act and the National Dam Safety Program that must be followed before construction commences. Today, I'll address two of those concerns, there's many, but due to the time limit, I will limit myself to two, and that's human health and safety, and addressing whether the proposed PUD qualifies for housing density. Zachariah, I am pleased to see that you and your staff have redone your staff recommendation, and I hope everybody has had a time to read that. It's a thoughtful, well-done, professional report. I'm also really pleased to know that you recognize Nuevo Court as a cul-de-sac. That is one of the reasons I purchased my home there. By my count, there are at least twelve dwellings currently on Nuevo Court. I think you missed a mother-in-law cabin on Musclove's property, not eleven, and maybe another one on Carla Vander Zenden's property, um, and the four vacant lots, three of which are under consideration for the PUD today. So since the Land Use Code restricts the number of dwellings on a cul-de-sac to twelve, I mean to twenty, and twelve already exist, that means we can have eight. If you take the four vacant lots and the eight dwellings allowed, one would conclude that each of those would get two, add, two dwellings in the future. I'm especially concerned about this because-
Thirty seconds.
I'm especially concerned because of the fire danger it poses to future and current residents. Um, most importantly, even if the Rancho Development PUD meets the requirements to qualify for a PUD, which it clearly does not, I did not have the opportunity to go into the bonus density, the Planning Commission is Noah, under no obligation to grant a special overlay. Instead, I believe the mission of the Grand County Planning Commission is to guide the future growth and development of the county in a manner that protects-
Time's up.
-human safety, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Rudy Musclove?
Hi, I'm Rudy Musclove, and we own the property at the end of Nuevo Court, twenty-eight-ten Nuevo Court, where the road ends, our driveway starts. We bought the property in nineteen-ninety-two, um, because it was secluded, um, Nuevo Court was quiet, actually, when we moved there, you could hardly see a light as you looked out in the valley, it was kind of nice. But, um, this subdivision totally does not, um, fit in with the character of the neighborhood at all. We used to be one-acre lots there, now I see it's, I don't know when it changed to half-acre lots, but, um, it's, it, I was on Planning and Zoning Commission for eight years, I happened to be on at the time the PUD, um, whole, um, all the regulations were first instituted, and, and this, I, I know it's evolved a lot since that time, but this is, totally does not fit into how it was envisioned back when it was originally set up. Um, I sent a letter yesterday, I don't know if I sent it too late for you to get it, but, um, Sorrel River Ranch was one of the first PUDs, and they, and the whole intent was to cluster buildings so they could save a lot of the farm and agriculture areas and not subdivide the whole property, which they did a really good job, I think, of doing that, and this does, doesn't do anything, it's just, the only person that benefits is the developer. There, um, everybody, I think, in this room thinks he has a right to develop under the LLR half-acre lots, but to go smaller than that is, totally diminishes the neighborhood. Um, and I just agree with all the other comments that everybody else has, has expressed, and um, it, I think you, I would recommend that you deny the over, PUD overlay, I don't see where they meet any of the qualifications for that, and that you allow them to do a eight, eight subdivision LLR. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Horrible, honestly, I was calling Rudy, um, I'm Nancy Shypal, I'm at the end of the road, twenty-eight-ten, uh, Nuevo Court, and thank you for being here. Um, what I, I'm supporting this for several reasons. We own the property, um, across from Mesa Verde National Park, and we are selling our home, and we came here because of fire. We live, where we live on Mesa Verde, there's one road in and there's one road out, and we understand what evacuation in an emergency is like, and if there are twenty houses, and what all that can happen on a, on a end-of-road cul-de-sac, we moved here, and the same possibility could happen, clustering on that cul-de-sac, and we happen to have horses, I'm the only one on the road with horses. The second issue is the water, we, there's a pond on that property, and over the last few years, we're watching this pond change. Last year, it was so wet, that my paddock was wet. So I believe there's some change in the aquifer, and I feel like a good science-based study in what's going on with the water there is probably very imperative. The other thing they spoke to is the culture. We went from Atlanta, Georgia, uh, twenty-five years ago to Mesa Verde, and because of, we wanted rural, we wanted this kind of culture, and we're leaving there to come here for that very, very same thing. Um, and I'm not naive at this, my son-in-law's actually been working with Planning and Zoning over for the city, so he's been sitting down lecturing me for two years on density and development and all of that, and I was also hired in, in two thousand and seventeen, and I developed the strategic plan for Region Nine, which, uh, economic development strategy. So I understand taxes, and I understand the impact, but I also understand, we had seventeen jurisdictions and five counties that we dealt with. And so what I'm saying i-is that if I'm aware of intentional development, but what it does to a heart of community, I think is what's most important here, and it's up to you to listen to these community voices and see how this affects the heart of this particular community. Thanks.
Thank you. Sherri Griffiths?
Hi, I'm Sherri, thanks, everybody. Um, I'm going to address the, the water issue, obviously, and thank you for that. The, a couple of things, one is, it was discussed about, um, whether a easement needed to be obtained, and it depended on historic drainage, and it is, uh, stated in the storm drainage plan that allows for historic runoff. Historically, the water has shed across that property and, excuse me, percolated down through the soil. There are no gullies or stream beds that show concentrated flows off any part of my hillside, this property would drain down to my hillside. There are no gullies, no streams that show any historic course that would allow- There are no gullies, no streams that show any historic course that would allow for a spillway to be justified. Also, if the studies are done, I'll find that it percolates down and it's going to, because of the sheeting, and it's going to come out on my property, which is another reason for an easement. And it would be very unwise for me to grant such an easement because it would spill right into my house. And with that, it's kind of, just a point, is that if they're allowed to build something like that, soon they're gone. And as with Rim Village flooding, which was deemed to be the lack of cleaning the pond, who's going to police it? Is the county police it? HOA police it? Do I go up? I have no authority to make them clean the pond, to dredge it. And so if the HOA doesn't know about these issues, then it's filled, it drains onto, it blows onto my property. I have the damage, my only recourse is a civil lawsuit against the HOA. Developer's gone. They're long gone developing something else. So it's innocent parties that get the brunt of that. I think there's a lot of things that have been looked at. I think that we do need a geotechnical engineer's study that gets into it a lot deeper. The project has to adhere to Clean Water Act, which requires aquatic, also wetlands delineation, and that might require a Army Corps of Engineer Permit 404. That hasn't been looked at to see if that's needed because it's going to the wetlands. The Environmental Protection Agency National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System regulates stormwater discharges to waterways of the state from construction and development. I don't think that's been-
Thirty seconds.
I know, okay, good. And then Mark Stillson talked about a small dam permit, where if there's a retention pond, has an embankment, and it's retaining water, they need a small dam permit. That needs to be looked at. I also have three water rights on my property. I think it needs to be looked at whether they would be somehow compromised. And the UGS survey specifically says this area is shallow groundwater, potential piping, and you can look that up.
Thank you.
So, thank you. You got to talk fast here.
So this will be fast. First, I want to thank Zach and his staff for relooking at this project. You mentioned something early on, that planning is always changing, and what that means to me is that we make planning decisions, they're not always right, circumstances change and we adjust them. Historical flows, as Sherri said, there's been no historical flows. All the water that comes down is infiltrated into the ground by the vegetation, so there is no right for any historical flows to go from this pond. A geotechnical report, let me address that. That consists of six trenches. The aquifers in this zone underneath that property are anywhere from forty to fifty feet deep. It didn't get even close to knowing what's going to happen to this aquifer. The slopes along the entire north end of that property are steep, they are made out of sand, and if any water is going to be put over there, they will blow out. I should mention, I'm a geologist with forty-two years of experience. Those slopes will not handle any water going over, whether it's natural, which it doesn't do now, or through a retention pond. When I bought my property there, I live on Old City Park, I share two-hundred feet of boundary with this project, part of the zoning approval was the pond I have on my property had to stay there. Those pond, that pond is fed by these springs. It's the same spring system that feeds into Sherri's property, it's the same spring system up in the Musclove property. So without a geotechnical, without actually drilling some holes and characterizing this aquifer underneath this property, we don't know what's going to happen. Once you remove, and once you put impervious surfaces on there with houses, driveways, sidewalks, there's a whole lot of water that will no longer infiltrate into that sandy system and feed that aquifer. My pond could dry up, I'd be out of compliance with what the approval was for my property. Not all property can handle full development. This is one, because of its physical characteristics, simply cannot. That entire northeast corner up there, you can see the slopes on there. If you get water going over there directed from the impervious structures and things that'll be built on this property, that whole slope is going down into Pat Creek, I can guarantee you. We all understand affordable housing. When I was on a council, I understood density, I agree with density.
Thirty seconds.
Density is a way to do this. But we developed a high-density overlay zone for this county. This area is not in high density. And thirteen homes and a requirement for thirteen ADUs, twenty-six homes is high density on five acres. So I think I've said that about as fast as I could. So I would last, one last thing, I would ask you to strongly consider limiting to one-story developments on this house. Nobody in this neighborhood opposes some development back there.
Time's up.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Guyman. I live on 2725 Old City Park Road, so I'm across the way from this proposed development. So I want to thank you guys for your time, and I want to talk about the purpose of the land use code. The land use code was adopted for the purpose of promoting the health, the safety, and the welfare of the citizens, the community that lives here. More specifically, it calls for a prevention of overcrowding the buildings and the sites that are detriment to a rural community and character, you know, of the neighborhood. You know, it's also to help prevent hazards like fires, flooding, and as well as traffic hazards. You know, this PUD subdivision that's being proposed, I believe, endangers the health and the safety and the general welfare of the community, us and the citizens that currently live there. You know, at a minimum, I would say that the Planning Commission should require the developer at his own expense to conduct additional investigations, ones that will determine the adverse impacts of neighboring properties, as well as the infrastructure and zones that are nearby that are environmentally sensitive areas. You know, it should be a suitable plan presented and available to mitigate those impacts and, you know, meet the requirements, at least minimum requirements of the LUC and protect the rural character of the community that currently exists there. I know you're aware that the PUD and other development is at the discretion of Grand County, and it's your legislative process, but I ask you, does this qualify? Is it appropriate? And does it serve the greater good of the current community that's there? You have the choice to decide what could be done, there's no requirement for any PUDs. As Planning Commission members, you serve the pleasure of the citizens, and again, we thank you for that. I hope that you would deny the proposed Rancho Nuevo PUD and any other subsequent similar requests in the Grand County area. It's a basis that exceeds the number of permissible dwellings for a cul-de-sac, and it does not meet the open space requirements that the land use code requires. I think the bonus density is, you know, not acceptable based on the proposed requirements that are there, and I think that it really does endanger the public health, the safety-
Thirty seconds.
...of the existing homes, and it really does negatively impact all the precious water sources that this community uses for ponds, for springs to water their yards, as well as Pat Creek. It's dangerous to the whole ecosystem that we have there, and that's why a lot of us live there. And appreciate you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Wenzel, 2725 Old City Park Road. So I moved to Moab not that long ago, well, six years ago from Massachusetts. I come from a family of firemen. If any of you are familiar, they are a family. I have multiples in the family, I used to spend a lot of time at the firehouse. My immediate concern around the amount of housing going in is fire. Coming down Pat Creek, right to my house, people getting off the street. Looking at the code, I looked up the cul-de-sac, maximum a thousand feet, twenty dwelling units. It's very clear, and even with what they're looking to do, if you had thirteen lots with ADUs, right off the bat, that road's over. They're over the twenty. And so I'm very concerned about the fire safety and the cul-de-sac rule, and why would we limit that? What would be the purpose? Safety is the only logical explanation for not wanting that to be larger than that. There's no turnaround for a fire truck existing on that road, so a fire truck would have to back down, and honestly, that's something that should be looked at now that this is brought to full light. There should be a turnaround for a fire truck. How safe is it if a fire truck can't turn around as is? How are they going to fight a fire on Pat Creek and get down there if we get another cinema court? There was a fire on the end of our road on July 4th this year with fireworks. It's a dry area, it's dangerous, and it's a very real concern, especially if you live there. And I just ask you all to put yourself in our shoes, if you lived on this street and there was a fire and you had to get off, would you want to be going up against another twenty-six houses worth of people trying to get off? Because if we're looking at affordable housing on the ADUs, you're going to have another set of families there. So I guess that's what I'll leave it at. I'm mostly concerned about safety and fire. No one, I think, is opposed to development. It's not a case of not in my backyard, it's a big lot, we all know there's houses going to go in. The people who live there, you're looking at taking away their right at ADUs? I mean, this is impacting everybody now that it's being brought up. It really is. I mean, if you had a property and you don't have an ADU now, you're not going to get one if he maxes out. I mean, so it impacts everybody on the street, and it's not a not in my backyard as much as a, I want to live if there's a fire.
Thank you.
Little short hair. My name's Stephanie Williams. I live in Moab, anyway, and I also have land out in Spanish Valley, so there are a few things that I'd like to bring up, and I can't really decide which subject to start with, so, and I'm a little irritated. So I'll start with the nice stuff. The people who will be purchasing these seven or eight lots, now that it's been brought down to that, will most definitely pay a premium and appreciate the extra space views and the community that they will have because they'll know their neighbors. So not going for the poor me kind of thing at all. We are all for affordable housing here, but there are places where it works out well, and there are places where it does not. This is a place it does not work out well. So one of the next things I'd like to say is, I heard, I didn't realize that there had been five test pits drilled, October. So admitting that there was digging with no permits, that was digging. There was also grading done on the 18th of December. I went down to the office of the Grand County Building Department and discovered there were zero floodplain development permits requested, no applications put in for any one of those properties. Now, on my land in Spanish Valley, it butts a floodplain, I cannot put a fence on it with a shovel without completing a floodplain permit. Now, they didn't even know this had been graded. Grand County, they didn't know. The building department was not even consulted, that this person who knew there was contentious feelings on this entire thing, just started going through all of it, just grading it down, taking the natural levels off. That, a floodplain development permit, you all have seen it, correct? You know what that is, you know what it means and why it's there. Any development that occurs within a designated floodplain must obtain a floodplain permit prior to the work commencing. However, on your website, it states, if your property is in or touches the floodway, flood, a floodplain, the permit has to be created. So even if where he's talking about building, yeah, the 100-year flood is definitely down the hill, it's on his property and it's touching his property. So he violated-
Thirty seconds.
...some serious laws here, and I want to know what the retribution for that is going to be. Last thing, I want to state clearly, Grand County residents will not be putting up with this. Our valley will no longer be subjected to the whims of speculative developers who cry, "Poor me," when they haven't done their due diligence in purchase preparation and fully intend to walk away with the highest profit possible. Glenn Lent, you haven't even apologized for breaking our laws.
Thank you.
I'm Austin Avery. I had the pleasure of being born in Moab, grew up here, got to travel around the world and still reside and live here. I actually lived in Old City Park Road for a while when I was a kid, and it's changed a little bit, but largely, there's a few new houses, largely the theme and the feeling's still there. You know, I know that a lot of people, we've touched on a lot of things. I just want to, we've had the water expert talk. One thing that I don't think's been mentioned is, I don't know how a retention pond can not filter pollution from, let's give an example, I did a little math. One thousand square foot home roof, and I went on eight, this is eight homes, just one thousand square feet, and a modest ten-by-ten driveway and a four-by-eight porch. The rainwater that collects in a quarter-inch storm is 5,024 gallons, okay? So one teaspoon of oil in that, a teaspoon, that's for one part per 415,000. When we talk about pollution and water sources, we're talking one part per billions. So we're fifteen-hundred times, if the ground, the pond either percolates through the aquifer and then goes into the creek, or we make it so it skips the aquifer and goes down the hillside, and it still goes into the creek. So I think that establishing a zoning variance, and by the way, that percentage is far under what's required for a drainage study. So allowing a zoning variance just to, could open us up a lot of things, that a good developer could change some sidewalks around and make it fit underneath a study, but it automatically happens we're causing pollution. And it's already been mentioned, we don't, unforeseen how much slope damage or anything can happen, which could be studied. I'm not a big naysayer about development, but that seems, just on eight units, there's quite a bit of potential for who knows what can happen. I have a hard time believing that, that by the time you do a study of drainage and hydrology and the slope stuff and build a circle and build ADU units, that this becomes affordable all of a sudden, where are we?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. In the closing, I got backwards. I think I just want to thank you all for your consideration. We have some errors in a lot of different applications and things here, but ultimately, you know, the decision is to make what's right for the community, and I think there's a lot of open land to do this, and this probably isn't the best place. Thanks.
Thank you. Jamie Edwards?[1656.26][1656.26]555-101-555
My name is Jeff Edwards. I'm a native of Moab. I was born and raised, I have seen change, and I'm not going to suggest that change isn't good, change is good, as long as it's in the right place. High-density housing, great, I'm all for it. Low income, let's get some houses here that my employees can afford to live, but not here. I know it sounds like not in my backyard. Most of you've seen that development. That development is rural, and it's rural for a reason. People that live there want to be rural. I get it, we need tax base, but at what cost? Are we going to attract people in that you're looking to put twenty-six houses, which by the way, thank you for changing the staff report, I appreciate that, that means a lot to me. And I know I'm speaking for myself, but I hear a lot of people that were born and raised in this town feel the same way that I feel. We need change, in the right place at the right time. Now is the time, but in this development, it is not the right place. It doesn't meet the culture. And I go back to the tax base, and I apologize, I got off course. If we bring more people in, people that, in that neighborhood who have raised families, who've been there for generations and have multi-generations on that, on that property, where are they going to go? Are they going to move? I can stand here and tell you, point after point after point, people move into San Juan County, LaSalle, places like that, to get away from this kind of development. I get it, it needs to happen in certain places when it's meet. My major concern is fire. We've all experienced what has happened in the recent years with the fire at Pat Creek, multiple fires, I should say. That place was a zoo, it was chaotic. My wife was there when that happened. There are multiple- There are multiple ingress and egress out of the cinema court place. Picture that in with one way out. You have that many families coming from that creek in a panic, one way. You've got fire trucks entering that way and people trying to leave that way. I understand he has the right to develop.
Thirty seconds.
But let's be responsible in the way that we grant that development to happen. Let's not just say, "We need a tax base. We need property. We need cheap housing." Let's be responsible in the way that we do that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie?
I get a little emotional, so sorry if I tear up a little. This is emotional for me. See? I was born and raised on that property. I live out there because it's rural. Because who dreams of living next to their parents their whole life?
Could you state your name, please?
Which of you?
Ma'am, could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jamie Edwards. I live on 2460 and a half Old City Park Road for 43 years. I live out there because it's rural. I live out there. I feel safe out there. Excuse me. I know my neighbors. I feel their concerns. I'm concerned about the water. I played out there on those lands, and when Jane Slate owned Sherri Griffith's land, I would play out in that backyard, and it was muddy all the time. So, I see where she's coming from with the water. It was a mess. The fire hazard scares me, too. There's one way out. I'm afraid that people are gonna get stuck in there if there's a fire. I'm the one who goes down and helps people. Like Jeff said, I was down there at that fire. I was pulling kids out of a daycare. That would be me out there, trying to help these people get out of the fire. I feel all the way my neighbors do, and I wanna thank you for taking the time to listen to me and dealing with my emotional, because I get this way, because I'm very passionate about where I live, my neighbors, and how we live. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Sue Batchelder?
I apologize. Thank you. A little better than that.
Sue, would you state your name in the microphone?
My name is Sue Batchelder, and I live on 2806 Nuevo Court, and I've lived there since 1970. Uh, I agree with, and I'm so, I admire the people and the research that they've done for this in our neighborhood. I think it's been phenomenal. The thing, one concern that I do have is, I got an email and it said that if they allow eight homes on Ranch on Nuevo, no one else can subdivide or build an ADU anywhere on Nuevo Court. And I have an acre and a quarter, and I understand you said the same thing, is that right? If he builds eight houses, nobody else will be allowed to have a subsequent dwelling on their acre. And it seems to me that's a big devaluation of our property and of our plans. If we wanna have homes for our children to come and live, we no longer have that option. So, while you're giving him the eight, you're taking it away from the people who have acres there. So, I'd like you to keep that in mind, but thank you for your consideration. I appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Vander Zanden?
My name is, my name is Carla Vander Zanden, and I live at 2690 Nuevo Court, and I thank also, thank you also for the opportunity to be here, and I thank the staff. I would like to also thank Lou Jean, who sold me my property in 1987. Uh, rural residential, it is now a large lot. Uh, my neighbors, uh, have frankly brought up most of the points that I would say, so I'll keep my comments very brief. Uh, I would just echo the statement that there is need for high density, there is need for affordable housing. Uh, our particular street is, my understanding, is not zoned, is not in the high-density overlay, whereas there are other areas, um, near us that are particularly the, the commercial highway. Uh, there are ADUs proposed. Um, I did not see requirement that they have affordable requirements or affordable housing requirements. The PUD trade-off is based on open space, uh, being set aside. It's my understanding that it, within the plan, the general plan, it would be possible to instead do a trade-off around affordable components or in lieu of fee towards affordable. And given my concern as an employer in this county for quite a long time as well with seasonal and year-round employees, I'm very concerned that there be an increase in stock of affordable housing. Uh, I have the same concerns that Sue Batchelder just mentioned regarding the future of my 1.1 acre lot as well. In my retirement or later year planning, later years' planning certainly was looking towards a split or some other way to use my investment to fund my later years and/or for caretaker or other family members. So, I would be concerned even about the eight. Um, I suppose, I haven't put in my application yet, so I may be just too late, but in terms of the character of the community, uh, this street, please keep that in mind in terms of the families that have lived there for so long and would like to continue to be there multi-generationally. Uh, lastly, uh...
Thirty seconds.
I have the same concerns regarding fire that have been stated already. Uh, I just would conclude by asking you not to make a favorable recommendation on this project as defined, but to consider a redesign for this five acres. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Did anyone else wanna make a comment who has not had an opportunity so far? Come on up. You can just, yeah, you're good. Say your name. Thanks.
My name is, uh, Michelle Busby. I'm the owner of 2781 Nuevo Court. My property is located along the entire eastern border of the Ranch on Nuevo proposed PUD. Um, I agree with the statements that have thus been said to you in this briefing here, but I also, I wrote something down because I don't love to speak in public. So, I wanted to emphasize just a couple of points. Uh, one is that, uh, the develop, Glenn Lent states that he'd be amenable to moving the retaining dam closer to the street, which means that he'd be happy to move it from being a hazard to Sherri Griffith to be being a hazard to me. I don't particularly want that retaining dam on my property, and that's the only other place he's talking about putting it. So, um, I'd ask that you give that the same consideration as you would give to Sherri. He can't offload his problem onto his neighbors. Let's see. Um, I appreciate when Glenn Lent said he was frustrated. Um, I actually don't sympathize that much with him, I guess because there's some equal frustration on those opposing this project. Uh, I mean, he, he has done a lot of developments across the state. Why would he not get the required permit to clear the land? Um, that shows a real disregard and disrespect for Grand County and for the community members. Um, it's, it... So, I, I really don't think that his, um, frustration should weigh that much in your decision. Um, sympathy for him, he, I don't think he's shown good faith by clearing that without getting the required permits. Uh, okay, now I will, uh, read what I have. How many, what time do I have left?
About 24 seconds.
Ah! Okay!
About 50 seconds.
Okay. Um, so, many of the regulations, and I'm talking about code here, many of the regulations with which we are all familiar simply codify what many consider common courtesy. You purchase a campsite, you expect to be able to sleep. Quiet hours rules are in place to inform all users what the expectations are. Most of us are willing to flex temporarily and with good cause. Neighboring landowners are generally the same. They were willing to flex temporarily and with good cause. You can park and block my driveway if I know it's temporary and there is good cause. Now, let's extend that to be, to parking in front of a fire hydrant. Now, I'm not so sure about agreeing to that. Is violating that regulation not only affects me, but affects my whole street. Um, now, let's say that you came over to our mutually shared boundary, our shared property line, and did something less acceptable. Say you urinated on my bushes, right? Um, if there was an acceptable cause with no replication, I, I'd just shrug it off.
Time's up.
Okay.
I wanna hear the end.
Thank you.
My name's Reed Bakken. Uh, I think I might be the newest person to the neighborhood. I bought, uh, to an E250 Old City Park about a year ago. Um, one thing that I thought I could speak to was the water in October. Um, I was, uh, very surprised when I moved on to my lot to find a undocumented spring or seep coming out of the side of Old City Park Road. Um, it is certainly seasonal. Uh, by the time July comes around and it's been 100 degrees for, uh, you know, 25 days straight, there's no water in it. I also have like a weird cellar in the basement. Uh, there was water on the ground, mold growing on the floor till about, uh, August as well. So, um, I think that what our neighborhood would like to see the most is, uh, considered designs. Um, you know, try a little bit harder in terms of stormwater directions and, uh, you know, individualized mulch basins, stormwater stuff, um, you know. There are a lot more technologies that are out there to improve this project, make some considered design. Um, and that's what, you know, I know that the land use code doesn't, uh, push people into making quality houses. It really just says, "This is what you are allowed to do." But I think as a, as a neighborhood, we would much, we would be much more comfortable getting behind a design, um, that looks like, uh, it's gonna be something that blends into the neighborhood, as everybody has said, as opposed to maybe like turning out like the, uh, Little Provo neighborhood, if you're familiar with, uh, near Milts. You got giant houses crammed into that corner lot. You know, I can just see, uh, 4,000 square foot one on the corner there. It's gonna be pretty full. So, um, I just think that, like my neighbors have said, um, a little bit more considered development for this lot, um, would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna make a comment that hasn't had an opportunity? Glenn, would you like to come up and, um, make some closing comments? There's no need to, but if...
You know, I don't, I don't, I'm happy to answer questions, but I, I don't want to make any comments.
Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing. The commission will now be discussing this. Uh, if you do leave, please just be mindful that we're gonna continue the meeting, and like I said, any noise in the hallway carries in. So, thank you. Well, we've decided with discussing our biolays, we don't need to start with a motion, so, um, any thoughts, any conversation? Or would someone like to make a motion?
Well, it seems to me that, uh, the master plan that sits up there, uh, just can't be approved, uh, and the maximum density, uh, is either eight, or if there's actually more houses on, uh, the street, as a couple of people said maybe there are, than the 12. And there is a rule that says the maximum density on one of these cul-de-sacs can be 20 housing units. That master plan probably isn't the right design. My inclination at this point is to reject that project as, as outlined, um, because I don't think it fits with the land use code. I have other, other questions that I probably worried about, uh, before. I'm not yet sure of the open space benefit and whether that's deserved. I probably would've raised, uh, that question. I'm not actually sure about water issues also, but it seems with the only eight units allowed there that we don't really have a plan in front of us that we can approve.
Can I, can staff just make a comment real quickly for the edification of the audience and for you all? You all probably know this, but, uh, the Planning Commission is an advisory body in its capacity for an application like this. You're not making a final decision. So, what you are voting on tonight is a recommendation to the county council, uh, whether favorable or unfavorable, the applicant certainly has the ability to move their application forward to the county council. So, just make sure that everyone in the audience is clear on that.
Thank you, Zachary.
So, I would like to make a comment. I'm new on the commission tonight, my first meeting, but there's a lot of flaws with this plan right now. The floodplain didn't get all the permits, posting, the water, the fire, a lot of unanswered questions. The biggest thing is the density. How many will, should be allowed in the subdivision according to the, uh, the cul-de-sac rule? And also, I'm a, I'm a big, uh, adamant of property rights, you know? By letting them, uh, build eight houses on this, uh, lot restricts the other neighborhood, neighbors in the community that have an acre and a half, two acres, whatever, they can't build an accessory dwelling unit on their lot, nor they can, they, uh, subdivide it for another house. So, I mean, I got mixed feelings on this, but there's a lot of flaws in this. So, I would recommend a postponement.
In the, uh, report that was submitted to the county from the developer, he states that, uh, the northeast, well, the upper right-hand corner of his lot, uh, would drain, the overflow from his pond would drain, uh, directly into Pat Creek. And now I understand that what he is saying, that it would flow into the 100-year floodplain of Pat Creek, but to get to Pat Creek as it normally flows, if we're not having a 100-year flood, would require, uh, his overflow to go across private property. And, uh, to me, that, I mean, I guess he could get a flow adjustment, um, if necessary, or if, some clarification from staff, if the .3 CFS per acre, which would be, you know, roughly .17 CFS for five, or 1.5 CFS for five acres, does that meet the intent of, uh, what could be allowed to flow against, uh, across someone else's property?
So, the figure is .03 CFS.
Oh, .03. Sorry. Thank you.
So, it's .15 across, you know, the roughly five acres. Uh, you know, I would say that's quite low, um, for most development standards, uh, you know, throughout the country, really. Um, you know, we, we set that target, or at least the engineers and the staff, uh, in place at the time that those drainage criteria were adopted, put those in place to be, you know, quite aggressive at, um, encouraging stormwater management to occur on, you know, on-site. Um, but, uh, you know, my understanding is that historical flow off that property is actually higher than the, the .15. So, you know, we have audience members who are trying to, you know, dispute that. Uh, I'm not going to, you know, serve as the arbiter of that conversation here in the Planning Commission public hearing. Uh, there is a time and a place for that, um, but, you know, that's the information that you have in front of you.
So, Zachary, where's the information coming from that historical flows off this property have been greater than that?
From both their engineer and the county's engineer.
Another concern I've got is, um, the location of the test pits. The geotech, uh, the, the amended geotech report in a, in a response to the county engineer is that those locations were just approximate. Um, and I think if they had been a little more careful in locating at least the last or, I think it's number seven or whatever that last one was, closer to the area where they, they planned... planned to have this retention pond, perhaps the results would have been different because it would have been closer to the toe of the slope or the top of the slope. So when I see a report from an engineering firm, I would expect everything to be very accurate. And for them to come back and say, these locations are very approximate, you know, they might be 100 feet, 100 feet from the location that we're showing on the map, to me, it doesn't show very good engineering work.
Do you want to make a comment?
We're going to have the discussion. I think a little bit later when we call the motion, there might be an opportunity. Any other comments, or did somebody want to make a motion?
I had comments first. First, it's kind of a technical question that I should have asked staff earlier. If I read it correctly, there was a late arriving letter from the applicant's engineer where he recommended that the detention pond and also houses be at least 50 feet back from the crest of the slope, which, you know, it isn't right now, I think. And that might be relevant even if this were some eight lot configuration. Does that comment, does that carry, I mean, is that, you know, something that the county and the planning staff, you know, we definitely need to take care of, or is it just one guy's opinion? Or how is that information or that recommendation of their engineer fit into what we're approving? I'm just not...
Well, I mean, that is, that is a response and piece of, you know, consideration for staff, which includes the county engineer to look at. I mean, just off the cuff, I would say that if a development applicant's engineer, their own engineer, is saying that their detention basin and, you know, that their detention basin should be more than 50 feet, or 50 feet or more from, you know, the crest of the slope, that, you know, at a minimum, we should be doing that, right? So I don't know if that answers your question, but I would say...
I just, but there's no specific...
Yeah, we rely, you know, you're not looking at any geotechnical engineers right here, and we don't pretend to be. It would be unethical to do so. And so we rely on the expertise of both our county engineer and the experts that, you know, applicants hire to provide that information. You know, it's not like we take the response of an applicant's, you know, expert and just say, oh, well, it must be correct. We, you know, then have to rely on Grand County's engineer to verify the accuracy and, you know, trustworthiness of that information.
So if the county...
And so we're coordinating this process in effect.
Okay. So if the county engineer agrees, then that's how it would filter through the final...
Yeah, I mean, what credibility do I have to question that?
Yeah, I understand. So my general comments, I guess I'm not very supportive of the PUD application. You know, I think the open space that's being offered is, you know, is not, is kind of unbuildable anyway. It's not really great open space. I think the, this particular area, if one were to look, you know, for suitable places for denser development in Spanish Valley, you know, this would not be near the top of my list. It's on a cul-de-sac. It's on a cul-de-sac that's already got a lot of houses on it. It's got all these hydrology issues, which I think are pretty complex and not typical for what we're doing. So, yeah, so I think I'm, for several reasons, I'm not supportive of that. I, you know, it's, these water issues are tough. I think Zachariah just mentioned some of the reasons. You know, I'm not a hydrology expert, you know, but I can tell that, you know, this is an unusual part of, you know, there's a lot of springs around here, there's slopes that we don't usually see when we get these kind of applications. And so I think just a sort of vanilla, typical hydrology study, I'm not sure whether that's, you know, I don't know what's necessary, but I just want us to be careful. And I guess we just rely on the county engineer, but I hope they're being on their toes about this. I, you know, the, this might not matter so much because of the cul-de-sac rule, but, you know, I think the big change of this area is not this PUD application, it was the change in zoning from one acre lots to half acre lots sometime in the past. Because, you know, if all we were doing was minimum lot size, it would be, we would be deciding between 11 lots in the LLR zone versus 13 lots that might be allowed with the PUD. And that's, that's not a really big difference. So I think there is a general issue that, you know, we do these zoning map changes and we tend to draw rather large polygons, and we don't look at every single site and take into account that, well, this is a cul-de-sac and this area has the hydrology issues, et cetera. And I think the attitude often in the past has been, well, we changed the zoning map, they've got a right to build, you know, this number of lots, you know, too late now. We should have thought about that, you know, seven years ago or something. But I think there is a provision in the land use code, it's 721, that says, you know, if we're approving a subdivision, the lots have to be, you know, quote, appropriate to the location, which is pretty general language. And so I think that, you know, we should, you know, for a lot of the reasons that people have given this neighborhood, we should ask ourselves, you know, not how many lot, you know, just do the arithmetic with the LLR zone and conclude 11 lots or eight or something, but take a closer look at the whether these things are appropriate to the location. I know that would need to be backed up and we would have to have some kind of rational basis, but... So I guess that's, that's most of my comments. I mean, I do, I do think that we need to consider denser development in the valley, but I think, you know, the first places to consider are close to town, and then after that, places along Spanish Valley Drive or along Highway 191 and places like this, you know, will be kind of near the bottom of the list. So it makes me not very excited about approving a dense development in an area like here. I think there are other places that we should look at denser developments first.
So we've heard a lot of testimony this evening, and it's really difficult to sometimes separate out clamor. And that would be exemplified by somebody who's very emotional but doesn't really have many facts, but from people that speak to facts, conformance with the code, and knowledge of the property. So it's challenging with a hearing in this size with as much testimony as we have had to separate out the two. I'm not saying that, I don't like all the participation, but to me, the main issues, I think, are the ones that Kevin has described. We have uncertain water implications. We have neighborhood stability and cohesiveness to consider. And on one side, and on the other side, we have a big emphasis here in the county to try to provide more housing. So we have to kind of weigh all these things back and forth. And I just would encourage all of us on the planning commission to try to separate out factual information from information that could be considered clamor when we make our decision.
That's wise. Is that off our motion?
Are we ready for a motion?
I move to forward an unfavorable recommendation to the Grand County Council to apply a planned unit development overlay to 2753, 2757, and 2775 Nuevo Court and approve the proposed Nuevo master plan.
So some favorable explanation on that?
I will second that.
Okay. Motion has been moved and seconded. Now we'll have some discussion on the merits of the motion. Bob?
I would only say, and I assume comments that have already been made here count as some rationale. I actually think the strongest thing for me is that, at this point, the master plan and the planned unit development or preliminary plan, they don't, I can't, they aren't what would be, they aren't, they aren't in conformity with the land use code because of this thing that basically says, well, you're good, you really could only build eight houses here on this cul-de-sac road. And I think that's clear, it's without clamor, and it is a major point that actually citizens have made and probably improved our recommendation because of it. And as I understand, staff agrees with that.
I'd just like to state that when I first read this, the proposal back in early December, and I looked at the map and I saw the open space that was supposed to provide a benefit to the public, it set off some red flags immediately. And then when I read the HOA, the proposed HOA rules, and I realized that the intention did not seem to be that this open space will be open to the public, I kind of laughed about, how could anybody come to us expecting to get a bonus, a density bonus for open space that doesn't have any public use? So I expect that I will be voting to deny or to not recommend.
I, that's exactly my thoughts. It really, for me, comes down to, first and foremost, the open space and the intent that that carries in our code. That it's not there just to allow for increased density as the benefit, but rather an additional community benefit that protects parts of the county for the public at the expense of the county for inviting more density and other externalities of this kind of development. And Kevin, I also appreciated your logic and thoughts there as well, thinking about beyond just what's in front of us, but the subdivision in itself and looking at this to come back before us. I also agree with many of the comments that were made today. I found it very reassuring to where my head was going, to hear so many potential neighbors or neighbors of this potential development speaking to their acceptance of development, of density, and that there is a large difference between being against any development and being against this development that is currently laid out with this PUD application. So I agree that this is something that causes me to be a little bit conflicted, Brian. So I'm with you there, but I think in this case, with what is in front of us related to the PUD, I just can't find myself to send a favorable recommendation.
Did you want to provide the applicant the opportunity to respond? That's up to you.
Let's, does anybody else have any comments related to the motion from the planning commission? Glenn, if you'd like to come up and speak for three minutes, you're welcome to. And would you be open to the planning commissioners asking you any questions afterwards as well?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I would probably make a similar comment to that Commissioner Willis has made. And, you know, we love the public hearings. I love to get input from the neighbors. Unfortunately, not everybody's a specialist in land development. You know, I've been accused tonight of stilling water, and I've been accused of, I'm going to flood the other neighbor out. So I would recommend that you leave it, you know, to the professionals. You know, there's some, Commissioner Willis, some question about our engineers and I still haven't figured out how anybody knows it's in the wrong place. The only way that someone could have, I can't figure out how they can do that. So unless someone went out on the site and physically took a GPS reading and figured it out. Again, the idea behind the samples, the five samples, is to get a correct sample of the property. What's underneath the property? What do we need, you know, whether or not it's here or 10 feet from here, which it's certainly not 100 feet as you might suggest. These are people that have professional licenses, that when they do something that isn't right, they run the risk of losing their livelihood. They run the risk of losing those professionals. So again, you know, I encourage you to look through the details. There's been a lot of misinformation, especially about the water. The grading, let me address the grading. Our charge to the contractor was to co-clean up the junk that was on the property. There's a lot of junk on the property. There is one small location that we were planning on putting a house, and we clear and grub that location. What that is, is that is basically you take the vegetation off of it. It's not what I would consider grading. The way the code is written is that if it's more than 100 cubic yards, either leaves the site or comes onto the site, qualifies it to grading, and that's my understanding. I think, I think we're close. So, you know, no misintention, no trying to go...
30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Oh, I get three minutes, too. You know, we're not trying to pull the will. We didn't mean to do anything that was offensive. We still don't believe we needed a grading pit to do what we wanted or to do what we did. We believe that it was really in the interest of cleaning up the property.
Do any of the planning commissioners have any questions to the applicant?
I just have a comment. So it looks like we have new information that maybe you and your engineers weren't aware of before, maybe it's a lack of reconnaissance or something. But I would say that knowing that there is an issue with flowage coming off this property that might affect an adjacent landowner, and if additional engineering work could determine what that effect would be, maybe that would be something that could better answer some of the questions that people have as to what the effect of your development would have. That's just a statement. So there's...
What?
So I think Zachariah said it best. You know, right now, our development, we're actually capturing more detention or more stormwater than is currently being caught on the site. Okay? Typically, in every subdivision across, you know, the country here or the state, you do a detention pond. That's, if you're increasing your hard surfaces, you do a detention pond, you calculate the numbers, you size that detention pond. In our case, it's already oversized 20%. So, and then in 100-year event, it still should capture it, but if there's still overflow, then there is an overflow spillway. If 100-year event, there's going to be a lot more happening than what's on our property at the time. One thing that we can do for not a whole lot more work and effort is to do a retention pond. And that's basically, does not allow any detention coming, or any stormwater coming off at all. We have to oversize it, but I think we're willing to look at those. So in that case, there should be nothing flowing off the edge onto somebody else's property.
I think my biggest issue is, I mean, all the engineering can be solved with proper engineering, it will cost money and everything, but how many lots will the county allow them to have? I mean, that's the issue right there. And so, as it is, there's 13 lots with 13 accessory dwelling units, and it's out of compliance right now, I think, according to what was explained earlier by staff.
I agree with that. And I think for all of the issues raised today, which are very sensitive in both directions, I think it comes down to exactly that, which is there's just too much uncertainty, the length of the cul-de-sac off of the Nuevo Court, or the extension of the cul-de-sac, the number of possible properties. And then I just, I don't see the open spaces designated being enough for me to vote in favor of the PUD. And Kevin raised an interesting point earlier, which is that this is not 13 units versus 11 units barring aside for a moment the accessory dwelling units. To me, it comes down to the PUD, and that is the first item in front of us of what me, it comes down to the PUD, and that is the first item in front of us of whether to send a favorable recommendation. So, I think there are other issues that are worth concern and care, and certainly this is not the only property in the area that, where these could come up in the future. So, I think it's worth learning from this and potentially doing some additional research as the county, but it really just does come down to the, the PUD eligibility. Any other comments or thoughts? Does someone want to call the, or, no, it's me. I call it. Hey. We're all, we're all in it today. All right. Well, for the, staff, I'm gonna ask you a question. The stating of this confused me with the approved, the proposed Rancho Nuevo. I just want to make sure that as stated-
Recommend.
Sorry? The second, the last paragraph, the whether or not to send a favorable or unfavorable, I'll just read it. The last bit of the sentence here just sounded weird to me, but I'm gonna trust that it's not. But it's, it's good to roll. Okay. So, the motion on the table made by Commissioner O'Brien is to forward a favor, excuse me, unfavorable recommendation to the Grand County Council to apply the planned unit development overlay, the PUD overlay, to 2753, 2757, and 2775 Nuevo Court, and approve the proposed Rancho Nuevo master plan. So.
I think it would be clearer to revise that, and I don't, to, to say, to send an unfavorable recommendation for the PUD overlay request and master plan, associated master plan at the following location.
Okay. So, I'll just restate that. Commissioner O'Brien's motion to forward an unfavorable recommendation to the Grand County Council to apply the planned unit development overlay to 2753, 2757, and 2775 Nuevo Court, and an unfavorable recommend-
Yeah, let me restate that for you all.
It's disapproved.
Disapproved, thank you. The associated proposed master plan. Thank you. All right.
Everybody clear on what you're-
So, you want to clarify in a second?
That's fine with, that's a fine interpretation of my recommendation.
All right.
In a second, Steve.
So, calling for the vote, all in favor to send an unfavorable recommendation, say aye. Five, four.
Zero against, two absent.
Two absent, thank you. All right. Great. If, please, if you're all going to make your exit, if you wouldn't mind just taking a moment to do that, and then we'll pick up with the last few items on our agenda. Sound good?
Baptism by fire.
All right, folks, if you wouldn't mind taking the conversations out into the hallway. Thank you. I like this 4:00 PM starting time. Yeah, I'm gonna be able to drive my daughter to swimming. This is great. Eight o'clock. I know, it's terrible. At least she's driving now, but I've got her car, so. Oh, the day she started driving made a hole. All right. Are we ready to, ready to wrap this up? Yeah? All right. Glenn, if you all wouldn't mind just stepping out, we're gonna continue. We've got a couple more items on our agenda. If you could take it out in the hall, we'd- Oh, 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 it's on my paper. I didn't, I don't make rules. Thank you very much. It is on the paper that Garrish gave me. All right. So, the two remaining items are-
Carla, Carla, can we ask you to step outside? Thank you.
Go ahead and shut the door if you want.
We can't, we can't shut the door.
Public meeting, yeah. We could send Kevin after them.
The last planning commission meeting, I had to go out there twice. I came all the way up to where the press machine was.
Right. All right. So, we've got two items left, future considerations and county council updates. I have some comments off of that for future considerations, but first I want to make sure there were no other comments that we withheld from the conversations before the public hearing started. We were talking about bylaws, upcoming efforts. Thank you. Zachariah was talking about things that were coming up. Do we want to have a retreat? So, if anyone had any other thoughts, wanted to make sure that those got captured.
Retreat sounds like, retreat sounds like a good idea.
And, and I don't know what the interest was with my suggestion of us really pushing to have a joint city-county planning commission meeting, so we can just kind of discuss things in general, not to get into nitty-gritty of any particular proposals. Any thoughts on that?
Highly in favor. Highly in favor. I think the work that just happened with the development standards showed the need for alignment, and I don't know exactly how things are going to, well, I guess with the, with the county council accepting the standards, we still have redevelopment standards. Those just didn't get brought up, did they, by the council?
For overnight accommodations? Is that what you're asking about?
Yes, sorry, thank you. So, I imagine that's something we'll want to revisit and work this evening on. Sorry, Dylan, my head is here and my brain is here. It's not-
It's not over.
So, yes, I agree.
Emily and I agree. What do you guys think? Would meeting be like a-
It might be helpful.
A couple-hour meeting or half an hour, half a day meeting with the-
About a half a day, maybe a couple hour.
Couple, yeah. But you think, yeah, you know, there's a lot of things to discuss,
but we have, I don't like long drawn-out meetings just to have a meeting.
No, I don't, this would not be a meeting just to have a meeting. And maybe an hour or two would be sufficient.
We worked closely. The, the city economic development staff and the county economic development staff worked closely in council to the planning commission on both ends and the council to, as we were looking at the development standards. So, I think that's an example of just even recently where the two have come together, but we've never actually sat down as a body, as a, two bodies and talked about what implications that has moving forward and some of the redevelopment standards.
And part of it has to do with, I don't have a good idea of how the city plans to annex into the county, and I think they need to know kind of what we're doing. So, we're not planning and allowing development that doesn't really fit with the vision that they have. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think they should annex most of the valley into the city, like personally.
Well, it could happen eventually.
I do have one, one suggestion, having been to other, other similar meetings, like maybe it would make sense to have like an email discussion ahead of time, so that, 'cause, 'cause you, you get a meeting like this and everybody has something to say, and a lot of it's redundant, and a lot of it's just people agreeing with each other. It's not on point. And if somehow we could just get all that out of the way before we meet in person and then have a more substantive discussion about, you know, issues that really do need it. I don't know exactly how to do that, but it could be like developing some kind of paper. I don't know.
I mean, we could do that at our, and when I say retreat, I do mean like, you know, an extended meeting that's not a scheduled planning commission meeting. But we also scheduled these meetings at 4:00 PM instead of 5:00 PM, so that you had time in between, you know, time before a public hearing occurred to, you know, have the conversations that we're kind of having right now. Right? So, you know, what we could do is, you know, try to have you focus on this question of what you would want to cover in a quote-unquote retreat and a meeting with the planning commission. I mean, I am in agreement, you don't want to look at my calendar to see how many standing meetings are in there already. So, I don't want a meeting, just have a meeting either. And I'm not entirely certain what you want to cover in a meeting with the city planning commission, although generally speaking, I do think that there is a, you know, some need and benefit to having, you know, conversations across the two advisory bodies. So, what I would recommend is that you all have this as a discussion item at your second meeting in January. Staff will discuss it with city staff on our own as well, and, and maybe we can report out on that to see if they have some ideas as well.
Well, I have done a little bit of pre-work in the last couple of years. I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to the past city administrator, and I've talked to the, your counterpart, Nora, who've all said, yeah, this is really something that would help, help Moab and help us. So, I think there's general agreement, at least at that level, that there could be some benefit to it. But I, if you could reach out to Nora and if she could reach out to her planning commission and just get a sense of how interested they are, if they're not interested, we can just let it drop.
Sounds good. And, you know, I like Kevin's idea of just, you know, the more focus we can bring to, you know, any of our meetings, the better.
So, I want to just build on that, because I agree, starting with staff and seeing if it's something they would be interested in, if it was. We talked about how our retreats, we've often identified commissioners who had extra time, who had declared interest in something. I think having somebody from the commission, maybe yourself, working with staff and from, from the city planning commission, working with staff, so that you all could come up with an agenda and then bring it back to the larger bodies, could help us get some focus and stay aligned without using that time in our meetings on it. So, perhaps we bring that back as a discussion item and consider that as a possibility, if the staff from both sides agrees that it's worth following.
I don't know why we have to delay. This has been a burning issue for me for like two and a half years. Just kidding.
I don't think we're delaying.
No, I think that's, I think that's a good idea. If we could send somebody to one of their meetings and we could be, that person could be on the agenda and say, to supplement what Nora says and say, this, this is something that we've kind of been mowing around and just see what the interest is, that would be great.
Any other thoughts from the, the meeting before the hearing? Otherwise, I have a couple other comments from what came up just now, as far as future considerations go. Kevin looks like he's thinking.
No, I, I think, you know, Zachariah, I think early in the meeting, Zachariah gave a list of planning tasks and that I can't think of anything beyond that.
Could you send that to us over email? Just the kind of high-level, big rocks that are on your mind right now for the next year or two? That'd be great. Thank you.
Might be a big email.
So, as far as some of the items that came up during the public hearing, it just, it seems like in general, it, it's really a shame that this is, I mean, I'm glad this issue was caught now, related to dwellings on a cul-de-sac, length of cul-de-sac. But it does seem like if that's there, there's likely other gotchas in the code, and I would hate for them to come up, not just in a public hearing, but after a developer has invested considerable time and money into pursuing a project. I think that we have a duty to make sure that our code can be interpreted earnestly. And I don't think there's any fault there, but I do think it's something we should consider. And I don't know if that's a review by the county attorney, or if it's a review by a board of developers, just, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the solution is, but I think it is something we should take seriously, because this is a lot of time and money wasted, and not just on the part of the developer, but on the, the party of the county itself. And then there were specific things that came up, some related to noticing, some related to permitting, and some related to easement. So, the easement specifically around historical flows, no flows beneath the perpulation layer, you know, when the eau crafaire is very deep and it's not a wet time of year, what is our standard for assessing flows? And then what are the potential costs to neighboring, to, to neighboring parcels, especially given this example where there wasn't a historical route? So, you have springs that have differing routes by year, so where is the easement, if there is one? And I found I'm still very confused about that, and I would love some clarity if you reach it as you're going back and reviewing this, on what implications that might have for other parcels. So, specifically in this case, potential easement from water where it has a seepage versus a stream flow? And then I'm concerned about the noticing issue that came up. There was some confusion around the fact that there was three parcels, there were two signs, one was down the road, it didn't have the developer's name on it, or it had his LLC, but he was the applicant under a different name, which just seems like it might not be against our code, but it's something we've been talking about noticing a lot. It tends to cause issues that we don't need to bring up. And then I'm concerned about the lack of permitting and the-
Then they were posted on the telephone poles. I don't think we can-
That was also posted on telephone poles.
I don't, I don't think we could, can do that. We're supposed to do that, right?
I mean, I don't actually see anything that prohibits that.
Okay. If the pole is, if the pole is within five feet-
If the pole is within five feet of the property line.
You shouldn't have to walk onto the property to read the sign.
Now, that may raise issues with the owner of that pole, which is not gonna be the landowner, but that's not for a great county to do.
Well, I think the issue, the issue is-
There's an issue with Rocky Mountain Power posting on poles, and that's an issue between Rocky Mountain Power and-
The issue is whether the five, the five-feet requirement is so that from public property, you can read the sign, and that sign is so far from the road that it was very difficult to read. The noticing issue before was that they didn't post it for the prescribed period of time before the public hearing came. So, I canceled the hearing.
And you-
And, and the developer was encouraged by Zachariah to, to post it appropriately, and also to post a sign on Old City Park, which didn't happen. So, he had ample opportunity to have the posting correct.
And I, I just feel to your point about clamor versus fact, if we can take care of the low-hanging fruit, such as our, I, we've revisited our noticing requirements. I feel like they are very clear. We should have set standards and we should ask staff to enforce them. Whether it makes sense to, you know, sometimes common sense prevails, but it just continues to come up, and it adds to the noise that I think at times can overshadow the actual facts at play. So, it just seems like an easy thing for us to address. I also would really like some clarification on the permitting related to the grading. Maybe that's not ours to look into, but I think it's something that is worth looking into, one way or another.
It's not that you need to be grading, but I mean, I don't think that there was enough volume of material removed or added to need a grading permit. The, the statute that was cited was a maximum amount of disturbance area, and it's, you know, probably not even clear enough in the code in terms of what constitutes disturbance. Now, you know, there are state requirements that you need a stormwater pollution protection permit and a noticing intent if you're, you know, disturbing more than an acre. But again, like, it's not, you know, it'd use it up to the person doing the work to determine that. So, in this case, I, I, we asked the developer to stop, you know, doing any work going forward in terms of clearing the land. He stopped. You know, sure, we would appreciate it if he comes in to, you know, clear, clear that work with us before him. You know, somebody suggested that digging the test pits was, you know, somehow illegal. That certainly was not illegal to do. You know, we wanted them to, to do the geotechnical report. They did it. So, yeah, certainly an issue. I think that'll look at the staff level on-
Thank you.
With the planning commission council.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Do we, did we get rid of the table mic?
It's up there.
I actually made it big enough that I might have it in my office, so I can see you.
So, I really feel kind of silly doing this, because it seems like you can write everything you want to know in the paper. Yeah, yeah. So, but, we did officially approve me as the council liaison to the planning commission for 2020, and my first comment on the agenda will be that my name was spelled wrong. There are no I's in my name, J-A-Y-L-Y-N. New chair and vice chair were elected. Mary McGann's the new chair of the council for 2020, and the vice chair. Something that we are considering in a meeting tomorrow, which I- Something that we are considering in a meeting tomorrow, which I believe is likely to happen, is extending the deadline for applicants to declare their candidacy for the clerk auditor position. Felt like there weren't, since it was advertised over the holidays in the public notice section only, probably wasn't real wide known since then. I don't, I'm not on Facebook, but I understand there's been a, a Facebook effort to let people know that that position is available and it's gone on workforce services, so we're gonna extend that deadline to the 31st, I believe, and then we'll appoint someone the first meeting of February.
Jalen, is the idea that for people who live in other states or out of, out of Grand County will hear about it through word of mouth, or is there a way that you could advertise broader than just locally?
No. Yeah, they have to be a resident of Grand County. Yeah. We officially adopted the development standards for overnight accommodations, pretty much as the planning commission recommended them. Were there exceptions to that, Zachariah?
There was some question about, I'm confusing the overlay zone versus the eligibility zone, but there were some, there were some questions that arose when we sent the recommendation to the county council. Some commissioners wrote a letter. Where, how was that resolved?
There were no eligibility districts established, so there is a process in place for the council to review and approve, well, for the planning commission to review and recommend, and the council to review and approve or deny OAO applications on any parcel. And, Kemi?
So, the use table is still applicable? So if the use table does not include overnight accommodations outside of overlay zones, overlay districts in, say, a residential area?
Somebody could conceivably submit an application for, say, an OAO to have a bed and breakfast in a residential zone. Yes.
So is, I just, because of the public interest in, in that topic from a couple of years ago, I would, if there's a way that we can tighten that up, I think we should. It's clear that people do not, the majority of people that consulted with us do not want more BMBEs in residential areas, and I don't, I don't know how we can, if we could specify that or not, or if it's even worth doing.
You guys might still want to speak into your mic, Kevin.
Sorry. So the, I, I think the change compared to what the code was two years ago is not that big. You know, we had the, the old overlay zone, and people could ask to have that applied to one or more parcels, and now we've got a different overlay zone to which people can ask to have applied. So it's, it's always been the case that, you know, if the council votes in favor of a, you know, BMBEs or Airbnbs or all this stuff can, can happen, and I don't think the procedure now is significantly more or less cumbersome than it was before we made the changes, so.
Correct.
No, I, well, my understanding is that the overlay, overnight accommodation overlay zone would not apply to residential areas.
Incorrect.
Okay. That's why I'm trying to get this clarity.
There's, there's no, there's no requirement for the underlying zone district with respect to somebody's ability to submit an OAO application.
Since two commissioners are missing today, can we ask staff just to give a brief overview of what was adopted by council at our next meeting and move that to a discussion item and move on to, you cool with that?
So, new topic, I should have brought this up under future considerations, but I forgot. I'm one, you know, we originally decided we would like to have our meetings first and third Mondays.
Let's let Jalen finish.
Yeah, just have one more item. We also began the public hearing on the amendments to the Landes Code regarding noticing requirements, and we'll presumably vote on that next council meeting.
And I'll let you know that staff recommended something different than you did, which is to remove that clause about the 30 properties. So, so your recommendation was sending notices to properties within 1,000 feet or 30 properties, whichever was less, and I think that that's really confusing. Because if there are, let's say, 50 properties within 1,000 feet of the subject parcel, which 30 do you choose? The ones right adjacent, or the ones farthest away, or some random collection? Yeah, the ones who like you? So it's just simpler if you just pick a radius and stick with that. They haven't voted on it yet. Well, what's before them to approve is what you forwarded, but they have the ability to amend it based on staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Jalen.
Okay, so we said we wanted our meetings first and third Mondays, but then they got changed over email because the first Monday has a conflict, and I'm just curious if there's any, you know, if we could find another place for the airport board to meet, and if they were amenable to it, or would be, we'd be interested in doing that.
The airport board was gonna meet on one of our Mondays, and they decided that they would go someplace else for that meeting.
But that's just, that's just one meeting out of a year, perhaps, because of a holiday, and what we're asking them to do is, is move almost all of their meetings.
I didn't approach, I didn't approach county staff about doing that, and in retrospect, I wish I had, because they said, nobody attends our meetings, we can, you know, it's a small board, we can meet anywhere. So it's unfortunate that there wasn't time to get that in the works.
Yeah, so, but maybe it's not too late. So I, I'm happy to do the legwork and talk to Bill Groff and things like that, but I don't want to proceed if people have decided now they, they like our meetings the way they are. I, I would prefer it first and third.
Uh, for Zachariah, I just want to make sure, I want to hear your thoughts on that, because we're now the first part of the year.
Well, I mean, we would have to notice the public that, you know, the calendar published, you know, is now changing. I don't think that's, you know, an insurmountable issue. You know, I can't tell you how well or not it would work, you know, to have a planning commission meeting the day before a county council meeting, just in terms of the amount of work that it takes to prepare and, you know, the length of the day that that creates for staff. You know, I alluded to the fact that we are doing some, you know, internal evaluation in terms of our own processes, largely to address, you know, issues slipping through the cracks, and the reality is that we are, you know, understaffed relative to our workload, and so there needs to be a conversation with the county council very soon about that. You know, my request for an additional staff person during our budget season was not supported in the budget. It was supported by the needs analysis study that the council initiated, and it's certainly supported by our workload and the liability that we incur by not increasing our staff capacity, but at the moment, honestly, I can't tell you if that would be, you know, an extenuating burden on staff, or if it would work pretty well, and it would be nice to not have, you know, a four-hour meeting every week that we have to attend. So, you know, I would say I support you looking into the potential to have the first and third Mondays, but I can't give you a definitive statement in terms of support or opposition.
Could, could you reach out to them and let staff know one way or another what you hear back before we get our packet for the next meeting? Because that way, right now on their next meeting, we're gonna ideally discuss and accept the bylaws and any changes there, as well as, you know, giving us, the sooner the better if we're gonna change something? Do you think...
Sure, though I, I don't think this affects, I mean, I think we worded the bylaws so that they're day-neutral.
Oh, right, but I mean, I think if we are going to change them for the rest of the year, sooner...
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm happy to go.
And I'm just being sensitive to staff's workload. If they have two meetings in one week, it might affect.
There are three holidays on the first and third in, in the calendar year.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. We have had a hell of a year, I'll tell you. So, just one comment about that is, I can't remember when it, when it happened, two or three years ago, staff recommended that we change our meeting date, and we were, at that time, we were very sympathetic to the workload that staff had, and I think for me...
It's much greater now.
Huh?
And it is much greater now.
Yeah. My advice is, see what you can not do. Don't volunteer for being the head of anything else, but, and that's just from a manager's standpoint, just say no.
Yeah, let Kenny do it.
To me, the impact of, of our meeting date on staff is, is pretty, that's pretty significant factor. So, no matter what the airport board says, we've got a lot of things to kind of wait.
Maybe they can run our meetings.
My, my guess is they'd be willing to move it if, if we can find them a good room. I, I talked to the city today, and they thought that things after 5:00 PM weren't good, but I think I just wasn't talking to a sufficiently authoritative person in the city to, to make it happen, so I'll try again on that.
So as vice-chair of the day, if you could find that out and just let us know over email sometime next week, that'd be awesome. Who wants to go home?
Second.
Done.
Third.
Sometimes he doesn't know how to spell somebody's name.
Yeah. Yeah, I couldn't even understand what the last name was. She said it was gonna be hard, and it certainly sounded that way.
So my, my head couldn't pronounce it accurately, though, and I tried to communicate that to my mouth.
Oh, yeah. Emily, you did a great job.